Before we start our meeting this evening, we have a little bit of a ceremony. And it's actually one of the most fun things we get to do as the council, which is to recognize one of our citizens for Citizen of the Year, thanks to recommendations from you, the public. And so we're going to do that this evening. And it's, sometimes it can be a little surprise. It doesn't appear to be that this evening, since in a small crowd is here. So welcome everyone to hear our recognition of Citizen of the Year. And Counselor Daniele is going to introduce the process.
I'll start by saying that we had, well, do you want to talk about the process?
Well, we had a lot of, I guess I'll start. We had quite a few candidates, but, and we voted on them. They were all very good, but this one stood, this person stood out more than the rest because of the many years of service that she has given to the town and the many accomplishments that she's achieved. So, thank you.
So this person, this person has been a community member, contributing to our community since the mid eighties, done great work with the Coastal Waters Commission, co-chaired Freeport's Comprehensive Plan Committee, volunteered at our schools, does a lot of work with the Wolfneck Club, the Wolfneck Roadside Spring Cleanup, Freeport Conservation Trust, volunteers at Election Day. But I would say what really set this person apart was the timeliness of this and the work that they've done, creating new trails, creating the Freeport Trail Challenge that was so well utilized last year. And we would like everyone to join us in congratulating Freeport's Citizen of the Year, Katrina Van Dusen.
Come on up.
So I think we have a plaque.
We do have a plaque.
I'm like hearing him on the town report and I'm like, I'm just so excited. Thank you very much. I'm not just here to like turn in my mooring application.
All right. Do you have your mooring application, by the way?
It's all set. It's done. Thank you very much. Luckily, since it's a surprise, I don't have to have prepared remarks. I will say that
Please step up to the microphone.
That, that I was recently at one of the downtown visioning workshops, which the whole thing is awesome, and I hope you guys can just go for the whole thing. I'm excited for it. But, and I got there a little late. It was already time, it was the Natural Resources and Open Space One over the weekend of all the small groups. And, and I got put in one of the small groups. And I just looked around and then we had a really constructive 20-minute discussion. And I just was so grateful that I live in this town where everyone's so positive and so optimistic and wanted to do stuff together and was appreciative. And, you know, it's not necessarily the trend in the country everywhere in local government right now. So I just felt super happy to be part of the community and to have all these other people that were gung ho. And let's hope we can keep carrying this on. And now that you give me this award, I got to keep doing it too.
Congratulations.
So thank you very much.
Anybody else in the public who would like to say anything, you're welcome to come up to the podium. I know we have some folks on the Zoom screen too who may want to participate. We can open up that as well. But maybe there's a more important meeting at Gritty's right after this. I don't know.
Tuesday.
Counselor Bradley.
Yeah. Don't go. Councillors get to talk too. I don't know what these hearing aids are going to do for me if I pick them out. I want to say two things. One, everyone who performs and does the kind of work you did stands on shoulders of others. And in the last couple of weeks, one of the people whose shoulders you stood on died. And Andy's missing. He wished he were here, and if he did, he would have said, "Thank you Katrina for what you've done. You've done us proud." And the second thing I'd like to say is that, you know, Citizen of the Year, eh, you know, it's something you get. But no, it's not a big deal. When you are someone who qualifies for Citizen of the Year, you've done something that's taken you out of your comfort zone many times. It's put you in a position where in order to accomplish the goals that you have in your heart, you've had to stand up to forces and to influences and to opposition that makes the community better. And at times, I think, everyone who's been named Citizen of the Year, and I'm speaking personally now, but from also having talked to a number of the others, questioned at times whether they're going in the right direction and whether what they're doing makes sense for them, their family, for the community. And it's only courage and steadfastness that takes you where you are. It's when you get this award that you realize that your community embraces you and appreciates everything you've done. You now have a place in the pantheon and welcome aboard.
Don't spend it all in one place. Thank you. Well, hopefully we'll see you soon.
Thank you all.
At a future committee meeting.
He's just grabbing stuff, so we can go ahead and stare. All right. So now on to the less fun stuff. Time to call our meeting to order. At 6:41, we are now in Freeport Town Council Meeting Number 05-22, Tuesday, the first of March, both in person and on Zoom tonight. So I'll start with the roll call. Counselor Pillsbury.
Present.
Counselor Fournier.
Here.
Counselor Lawrence.
Here.
Counselor Daniele.
Here.
Counselor Bradley.
Here.
Counselor Egan.
I'm here.
And Chair Dan Pilch is here as well. So let's say the Pledge of Allegiance together.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is to waive the reading of the minutes as prepared by our Secretary of Meeting Number 04-22 from February 15th and to accept the minutes as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Any second, Counselor Bradley? Any discussion on the minutes? Corrections, notes? See none? Well done. Thank you.
Good job, Christine.
All in favor of accepting the minutes as printed?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain. I wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
And one abstention from Counselor Daniele. Thank you, Jake. Okay. Now I've got some announcements to read. Right in front of you. I've got four announcements tonight. The first is about the library. The Library Board of Trustees is preparing a community survey to go live the first week of March. The board and FCL staff are interested in the community's thoughts about the library, current and future services, and how FCL can best serve the community. This quick online survey will give library users the opportunity to provide us with valuable and specific suggestions for library services. The survey link will be included in the next municipal bulletin, the library's March newsletter, and on the library's website. Second, the town's Public Works Department Posted Roads, effective February 28th yesterday. A posted road guide is available on the Public Works page of the town website. Next, the main DOT bridge work will begin at Exit 20 Desert Road with the equipment mobilization in early March and construction demolition and earthwork starting in mid-March. Both bridges will be worked on simultaneously with Exit 20 starting first in March 2022. Exit 22 demolition will start in late 2022. Exit 22 construction will commence in early 2023.
Not really simultaneous.
And there's a long delay involved here too.
Government work, that's pretty close. It's in the same decade.
The contractor's goal is to complete both bridges by late 2024 to early 2025, as work permits. Project scheduled completion date is November 1st, 2025. Updates for major work items will be provided on the town's website through social media, main DOT's project website, and the Portland Press Herald. It's nice to see work at least starting this month. And lastly, the AARP Foundation has a tax aid program. They are doing taxes at the Freeport Community Center, 5 Depot Street, by appointment on Wednesdays only, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Does anybody have any other announcements about upcoming items? None. I'll move on to the fourth order of business, which is always fun and informative. It's our information exchange, which is a time for councillors to share updates on meetings they've been to, events that have been going on, information to share. So does anybody have any information to exchange? I'll go down far in first. So Counselor Bradley, sorry, Counselor Pillsbury.
Thanks. This isn't a fun one. I do just want to call attention to what's happening in Ukraine and the humanitarian crisis. And so I encourage everyone to learn as much as they can about what is happening and why it is happening. And please reach out to anybody in the town that may have personal connections there. And if you're called to do more than that, there's some great international charities that are doing good work to help the, the population there, like the International Red Cross, Care International, UNICEF, and the United Nations High Commission for Refugees. So if you're called to action, please feel free to donate, do whatever you can. But please learn more about it because it's a really important thing that's happening and everyone should be as understanding of it as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pillsbury. Others. Counselor Bradley.
Yeah, it's been a busy couple of weeks. First, Island Rover. The information from the Island Rover launch plan has been shared, as I think I said, with, basically with consultants, one hired by the town to look at geophysical things in the flats that will be affected by the potential launch plan. And also two volunteers from BIW engineers who have looked at the launch plan and have some questions. Over the, since the last meeting, we have set up an informal sort of discussion between those people and Mr. Grindel, the engineer for Carter Becker and for Harold, and to just sort of talk it through and connect the dots, figure out what information gaps there are so that they're, they can be in a position to make a recommendation to us. So it's ongoing. Due diligence is occurring. It's a little slower than it might be in the private sector, but this is after all government. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was that I had had a District Two meeting last night on Zoom. Approximately 10 to 12 individuals sat in as I described the downtown visioning process as I understand it. And as Russ Bickham, Russ Preston has described it in his summary at the end of the Downtown Week, Design Week. And I have to say two things. One, everybody's very excited. I mean, Katrina's comment here is typical of what I hear from people who are, in a way, just learning for the first time what's involved. And the second thing is there are a lot of people who are learning for the first time what's involved. And despite the fact that we all feel that we know a lot about it because we hear about it all the time, there's a significant part of our community that is in the dark. Not, not at our fault, no blame to place, it's not that. But I think we ought to, as we go through this next couple of weeks, remember that that's so and try to find a way to make sure that anybody who's really got any antenna quivering gets the information. Now, I know we have meetings coming up. I know we think everybody will know about that. Everybody will have a chance to put in more input. And that's to the good. That's all great. But I think there's, there's a, there's got to be a way for us to find that we'll communicate from people who either aren't on the computer all the time, who aren't in touch with town affairs the way we all are. And I'd be glad to talk to anybody about that who's interested. But I think we need to make that effort so that in, on May, whatever it is when we raise our hands, we can feel comfortable we've done our downright best to make sure everybody has had their chance. Having said that, the other meeting I attended this last week, well, two. One was the sewer meeting and subsequent discussions. And I think at some point, Dan, you're going to talk about what FEDC's, Mary's going to talk about FEDC's recommendations with the sewer.
You can do that now if you like. Mary's going to join us at the end for the other discussion on hometown response.
Out of the downtown process, and just because the sewer district's so important to town, we've been, as a council and as a community, apprised of the sewer district's need to significantly upgrade the sewer plant to protect the harbor, to protect the quality of the water, to protect the marine resources, to protect the neighborhoods, and to make sure that in the next generation, the sewer in town is taken care of. From a downtown perspective, the sewer district's connection fees have become an issue in terms of trying to figure out how you're going to revision the downtown and change big spaces into small ones if connection fees are very high. And people have been experiencing that. So out of the collision between those two very important issues, there's been an effort to engage the sewer district in this, in a discussion. And they are open to it. Lee Aris is open to it. Sally Leland's open to it. Today, at a FEDC meeting, it was suggested that the council approve the development of a strike team, which would involve those people, a member of the council, that would, I'm willing to do that if I'm the right person, and Mary Davis and Leah Nichols, to meet with Sally and Leland and talk about the intersection of these issues and see if there's a plan going forward where the opportunity to cooperate and communicate can be taken advantage of at this, this critical time. So I'm optimistic that the council will think that's a good idea. I can't think of any reason why it wouldn't. But on the other hand, I'm not in your heads. As I find out time and time again. So, you know, I, at some point, I'd like to have a council assent or dissent to that, to that idea. Because there's already a meeting scheduled for next week, assuming that there would be no objection to the council, but not assuming that, not assuming your decision, but hoping that you would approve of it. So that's, that's that. Mary's going to talk about the rest of it.
Yeah, the end of that sort of response, yeah.
There was also an FEDC meeting, and I thought some real progress was made. And I, Mary's going to be on, and she can talk about all that.
Yep, yep. Just to sort of follow on to two things there. One, I'm open to, on behalf of the Downtown Project Team, I'm open to ideas about how to get more people involved who feel like they've been left out. Certainly not our intention. And the more ideas, more ways we have to reach out to people, the better. I think we've been trying to do all we know how to do. I would say keep this in the back of your mind as we get to budget season and start discussing, adding a communications director? Because this is exactly the kind of thing that I'm hoping a communications director will help with in saying, "How do we reach all of the people using the types of channels that are appropriate to all the people?" So Tony's always reminding us that, you know, a computer's not always the best way to reach some of the population that she's intimate with. So I'm open to that. Any ideas we have for now? And I'm also eager to get a communications director on board. And then just regarding the sewer piece, we've been very open to say, "Let's collaborate with the sewer district for sure." FEDC, I think, could be a great ally to help us. I'd like to ask that Counselor Pillsbury also join from the council. That would be my suggestion, since the facilities are in his district. And I know he's got concerned citizens. So I'd opt to have two folks in the council. We can do more if we want. It just means we have to trigger public meetings and things like that. So I'm all for that, but that would be my suggestion. Yeah, Counselor Lawrence.
I just had a couple of ideas for getting it out to everybody. Posted it, Post Street? Posted at Chaws? Gritty's? Mass Landing? If you, if we get a little poster that says, "Hey, learn about your town, what's going on? Here's a website," or, you know, put someone in charge, put someone's number down there, that might reach more people very quickly. And if we get it done tomorrow, I'll pick it up because I'll be at Mass Landing tomorrow.
Perfect. Turn the laughter.
After six.
That's now a town visit for you instead of a recreational.
It's a case study in altruism right there, Counselor.
Yeah, exactly.
My pleasure.
We do, the next sort of big public event, which I'll get into, is April night. So I'll make sure we get some in advance of that for sure.
Is everybody okay with the sort of strike team for the sewer district discussion? That make sense?
Yep. So the idea is basically just where, you know, the two councillors would represent, you know, bring information back to the council.
That's right.
I don't know that the strike team.
No, no authority other than to advise the council. That's all we're doing. And that, and by the way, that's all Leland and Sally have in terms of advising their board if we can come up with any solutions. The only other piece of this is it would make some sense to have a town staff person also involved in the conversations because of a lot of different things. And, you know, I can think of three that would make sense. And it's not my job to tell anybody what they are, but I'll leave it up to Peter to figure that out.
I'll let you guys chat with Peter on that. It's worth noting and summarizing, just so that it's, you know, part of the same conversation, that the, the consultants to the sewer district, when they analyze their infrastructure, noted that there are improvements that need to be made in the short term. And the improvements range from $8 million to $25 million and beyond. So there are significant projects ahead of us, which is why we want to not sit back and wait for something to happen, but to kind of help the process along as much as we can and start building the towns of communication. Because there's, there's going to be some funding challenges ahead, I think.
I think that's a great idea to work with the sewer board. I served on the sewer board for, for a couple of terms, and we restructured it. There never has been a good relationship. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just going to call it, call it as it is. I think this is a great opportunity to open that up. And I would also encourage, this gets back to our grant writing skills. There's a lot of money coming out. The sewer board was fairly successful in getting grants. But once again, if we can cooperate and collaborate together, maybe we'll be a lot more successful in the importance of that. So thank you for bringing that up there.
Yep. Yeah, we'll follow up on that grant discussion. There's more to follow on that for sure.
I'm done.
Thank you. Counselor Egan?
Last meeting, I mentioned that I would try and work on having something tangible for the council to respond to in terms of a strategy and a plan for the ARPA funds that the town has received. We've allocated a small portion of that towards, well, not a small portion, a significant portion for hazard pay for our first responders and police EMT, fire department folks. And there's a range of possibilities of what the funds can be spent on, primarily hard, lasting items that benefit the community, infrastructure, et cetera. And loosely, Counselor Pillsbury, Counselor Bradley, and I agreed to have some conversation. The three of us actually didn't occupy the same phone line or Zoom screen at the same time, but all three of us talked and shared emails, et cetera, about some ideas. And so there is coming together a, it needs a little bit more work, but just to advise folks, coming together, there'll be something for us to consider at an upcoming meeting, hopefully the next one, that will try and balance the wide variety of ideas and opportunities that are out there with specific focus on the downtown projects and, and the very likely capital budget that's going to be accompanying a lot of those ideas, specifically addressing those folks in our community who are directly impacted by COVID-19. And that might include something through coordination through FCS and some other organizations. And then getting right to what we were just talking about, which is, you know, standard infrastructure, water, sewer type things. So there'll be a balance of those kinds of ideas. There, one of the potential methods, of course, is to, you know, it's, it's federal pass-through funds for the town. But if, but it's also not an enormous amount of money to really change things dramatically for the next 25 years. So we're trying to balance out opportunities there. And the, the guidance from, from the feds, it gives us a pretty firm left and right rail on sort of how to go about that. I shouldn't say left and right, two sides of the rails, on how to go about that. So we've got a lot of ideas between the three of us, and weren't able to actually get a meeting together with schedules and everything else that each of us are doing. So we'll try and have that for the next meeting, possibly even at the next workshop.
We had a discussion at the last meeting of maybe trying to set up some sort of relief fund for people that have been in the community for a long time and are on fixed incomes. I actually had four people in that situation reach out to me. And people are hurting. You know, between the gas prices, the heating prices, the cost of everything going up. I really hope, we really make this a priority, number one. And number two, as I said, we know this is government, but hopefully we can act on that quicker. And, and we do have some funds coming in. And I think Counselor Egan had some great ideas. So I, I hope we can get our collective thoughts together and really help some of these people out as there's some need out there.
Yeah, good point. I've been in touch with our state rep, Melanie Sacks, about the different state property tax programs that are available for seniors and veterans and things. And I, we just missed catching each other today because I intended to give an update on what I learned from that. And the second part of that conversation is to better understand what we can do as a town, what options we have. And I know Peter's been, been involved in that as well. So hopefully we'll have some updates at the next meeting on property tax relief.
Give you a brief.
Yeah, great.
Give you a brief update in a couple, in a couple of seconds.
Oh, okay.
But I think I'm going to talk with you and John before the next meeting about how to present that and how we want to have that discussion at the council. So we're doing that at staff level. So just, we are moving forward on that, just so you guys know.
Great. Super. I've got some downtown project updates to share. Mary Davis is going to join us at the end of the meeting for the downtown response, part of the discussion. She's out of town this week. But just to kind of remind everyone of the schedule, we, you know, we wrapped up our downtown design week, as you know. Basically, Principal Group has been busy writing their report. They're consolidating all the stuff they shared with us at the design week and all the stuff they learned from us at the design week and compiling it into a report. That report is going to be coming to us in three weeks' time, the week of the 22nd. We'll have a chance to look at that for at least a week or so. And then we have a workshop to focus exclusively on the plan, March 29th. And that's our first opportunity as a council, to kind of dive in with Principal, with Mary, with anybody else on the team, to ask questions, to pick it apart, to, you know, to see what's going on. What we're expecting to see in that report, you know, all the things they talked about at design week, all the different project ideas, all the different changes that we could make, from a boulevard on Mallett Drive to zoning changes, to process changes, to redesigning Main Street itself and more. Also meant to be included in there is some idea of cost. It's not just all, you know, fill in the blank. They're not going to say this project costs exactly this much, but this project will cost between this and this. And also some idea of funding sources. So these are likely sources of funds to get Main Street redesigned, that kind of a thing. So we expect that to be in the report. We get to dig in on March 29th. We get another opportunity to dig in April 12th at another workshop that's dedicated just to the downtown plan. In between those two, on April 9th, is a public open house, where they take all the boards that you see right now in the hallway. They'll be updated, will have the plan to present to the public. That'll be out here on the, on the lawn in front of Town Hall, hopefully, weather permitting, have a barbecue, have some nice, you know, turn it into a fun event, get people out and talking to each other and talking to Principal Group, talking to us. So we'll have that feedback with us as well by the time we have our second workshop on April 12th. So we have two dedicated workshops just to focus on that. Presumably by then, we're all going to be comfortable with it. And if so, we have a vote scheduled on May 5th, no, sorry, May 3rd, to adopt this and say, "Yeah, we like this plan. This is the vision that we want to move towards going forward." That's sort of the schedule. At that point, our contract with Principal Group is basically up. So then it's up to us to say, "Well, what do we want to do from here?" So, and we're going to talk a lot about this at the end of tonight's meeting. We don't want to say, "Okay, great, report's done, file it on the shelf, and we'll go on to different business," but we want to carry it forward. So we've got something to talk about at the end of the meeting. But that's where we are. So we've got something to talk about at the end of the meeting. But that's where we are with the downtown plan. Anything else for information exchange? Before we move on to the Town Manager's Report?
All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our fifth order of business, which is our Town Manager's Report.
Mr. Joseph?
All right, Mr. Chair. I will skip over my equally confusing update on the bridge construction schedule. I probably would have made it worse than what you did, Dan. So concurrently or staggered, I'm not sure how the construction. But they will be happening starting in March. So in the next month, we'll start seeing mobilization, which is the important thing for people to know. And we will be in various stages of construction. They will have two-way traffic at most, if not all times, if the project is the plan. And, but there will be various levels of disruption over the next two to three years is what we're expecting. But the good news is that we will be maintaining two-way traffic for the project, which is a win for Freeport because that's one of the big things we always try to get when we do local construction projects. So there's not a disruption left to right across a major intersection like that. So I'll leave it there. I want to give a brief update on, at my own peril, masking at town facilities. I've gotten a couple of questions about this. The town removed mask requirements the next day after the council order removing, or actually when the state, the town-wide mask ordinance expired on the following Wednesday. And I've talked to a couple of counselors about this. But since that time, CDC has updated guidance, which I think is, I'm gonna, I'll put it up on the screen here just to give people an idea of what we're talking about. I think the public should, if you haven't taken, I know a lot of people are burnt out on some of this stuff right now, but it is really helpful to look at. CDC update, they're classifying communities into high, low, high, medium and low community levels for COVID. They've changed recommendations on what each of those are supposed to be from the old mask guidance that existed before. So the good news is a lot of the country is in the green and yellow, which do not even recommend masks unless in the, you are in a higher risk population, in which case they recommend you should talk with your doctors. Cumberland County is stubbornly hanging on in a red category here in Maine, which is considered a high level where mask wearing is still recommended. So we're going to continue just to recommend that the CDC guidance go in, but not required in town buildings. We are seeing main numbers go down drastically, so we're expecting very shortly for us to follow some of the other main communities that have already moved to the medium risk category, in which there is not a recommendation from CDC that most Americans have to wear masks in public. So just an update on, to people on what we're using to follow that guidance and that we expect that recommendation to go away completely in the next, you know, two to four week time period. I'll update, I'll continue to update the council when that change happens. But the good news is you can look at areas even in New England where they're seeing a lot of yellow and green, which are considered low risk, which is a really welcome, you know, for everybody that's sick of this thing for the past two years, this is a really welcome change to see these kind of numbers and these kind of performance. So.
Add a note on the schools, because I know people have questions about the schools. So I think the school board, school board has a meeting, I believe it's next Wednesday, the 9th, it might be the 8th, but I think it's the 9th, where they're going to discuss masking policy in the schools. We don't set masking policy in schools here at the council level. So for folks who are interested in that, that's the time and place.
And I think that's, that is important. I would, I'm assuming that they're going to be seeing these same recommendations from the CDC and those numbers might change before then. But if I was to make a recommendation in that regard, I would look at these and see where, you know, high, low, medium and yellow or red, whatever the guidance is. So I would expect. So people, if they're interested in masks in schools, should pay attention to what these numbers are doing here on the CDC side too. So. And, oh, whoa, that's weird. And just really quickly, I'm not going to share this because it's not in its final form, but we just touched on the tax relief, tax assistance, specifically a couple of the ideas for seniors, deferrals or rebate programs that were brought up recently. Our new assessor has done this nice document that he's doing a little bit of work on to make a few changes that I've requested before it goes out to the council, but he did a pretty comprehensive just overview of the assessment status of the town. But this is not going to change what he did on the very beginning here, census and the demographic data he pulled for us. I did confirm that we do not have demographic data linked to property ownership. We shouldn't have that because that would invite, that could invite problematic decisions to be made based on demographic info. It should, assessment should be neutral to who the property owner is. It should just be based on the valuation. So we are assuming from the census that these numbers are, hold true across all property classes, which they don't because there are senior rental facilities, nursing homes and things like that. But assuming that they held true, this is the demographic breakout that you would see in town.
Enlarge it?
Sure can. Maybe.
In the middle.
There we go. Let's go down one notch. There we go. So under five is 5% of the population, under 18, so that's, you know, children is 21% of the population, which is actually pretty high. I think it's consistent with the suburban community like Freeport. Person 65 years and older, 18.2%. So everybody else is in the middle, you know, is considered working age between 18 and 65. So that's a, 18.2 is a pretty significant number. So I think it warrants some, at least some consideration of everything we've been talking. It supports that, the effort that the council wants to make. So I'll send this out, this draft, once it's finalized, a few things to the council to, for you guys to digest. It's just a good overview of what property values look like and breakouts between classes. Shows things like all the different class uses that he put together. Did a really good job on it. He's adding, like I said, a little bit more, but you can see.
Can't see anything going by at 100.
That's okay. Just things like breakout of residential by condos, three-family, four-family, seasonal, single-family home, undeveloped land. So all that kind of stuff. So.
Are all those demographic figures related to people who own property or are they general?
They're not. And that's one of the, that's one of the problems that we have is we do not have a way to confirm, to link ownership to age. And that's what I, when I said senior housing facilities, nursing homes, things like that typically might take a large portion of that 18%, that 18% of over 65 age group out of the ownership category. So that's something that we need to keep in mind. So not all of that 18% would be property payers, property taxpayers. But then again, none of the children are probably property tax, I mean, unless you have a very special circumstance, I don't think anybody under 18 is, not many of them are paying property taxes. So. So we would have to kind of assume, but I think it's safe to know that about 20% of our population is 65 and over. That's a good way to think about it. So we'll, we'll talk more about this. And I've also got a summary. I've been talking with men about the state programs that exist and the local options that we have to adopt programs. There are some that are, that could get very similar to the direction that Joyce Veyou mentioned at the last council meeting for a suggestion, you know, like an age limit, a number of years of ownership, things like that. And there are statewide exemption programs that are brand new that have just gone into effect. And I'm sure when you talk with Rep. Sacks, that she's going to tell you about what those new programs are as well. So we're still digesting them. They just went into effect just in the past two or three months here. So we're, we haven't even gotten the applications completed yet in terms of what people need to start applying for on April 1st. So. So more to come. We are looking at it pretty seriously. I'll pass on the words of encouragement that a few counselors mentioned that it is a priority issue and make sure staff knows that. So especially with everything going on, I think that's very relevant request from the council. So we'll make sure everybody knows. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for that report. Our sixth order of business is, as it is on every agenda that we have, is our public comment period, which is the time for anyone in the public to hop on up to the podium, the microphone. Or if you're on Zoom, raise your electronic hand and let us know that you've got something to share. This would be for items not on our regular agenda. Our agenda is fairly short tonight. We do have an item later on to talk about the response to the downtown plan and I'll certainly, if anybody's here to talk about that, there'll certainly be ample opportunity to do that then. But any other items coming up?
Andrew Osno, Route 1, Freeport. Have a couple topics, I guess, questions that we could be informed in on later when we get to budget season. One is, I think it'd be great. Years ago, when I was on with Ed, we spent a lot of time sort of compiling little budget items and really tried to punch up our, I don't know what you call it, project funds, so we could sort of totally fund buying equipment. Remember that, Ed? We had a whole bunch of it left over from sidewalks and stuff. And we sort of got Dale to put it all together and we allocated that the fund reservoir, or whatever you want to call it, so we could buy a fire truck or a dump truck without bonding. And I was curious, as we're going into budget process, where we are with our, was the fund grown or shrunk, or have we spent some out of it, or where we are with that, so we could sort of see what's happened to it and where we stand today as we did, you know, 20 years ago or so. And the other thing is, I'm still on my ongoing thing to, when you get to a point with the stock accounts or the reserve accounts, I'd like to sort of have some public airing of what's going on there, so we can see where it's going, what you found out, maybe just a handout document or a slideshow or something, so we can see what's going on. So. I guess maybe the third thing is, it goes along with the reserve funds. I know somehow along the line, we lost our contracts to transport contracts, and I don't know how, but you know, what happened to that? And are we going to try to get those back so we can, I know that was buying equipment for us at the time and you know, we're not so much volunteers we used to be when we grew up here and it's not so many people living downtown. And what's the status of those? So at some point, when you get the budget, that'd be great if we could sort of have a public airing of those, that'd be great.
Yep, absolutely. Do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by transportation contract.
Any T thing, I think.
Well, we used to transport people, I believe. You know, we used to get paid to, paid to transport.
Non-medical emergency transport, is that what you mean?
Are you talking about the non-emergency transport program?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the stuff we used to do, like for the nursing homes and the hospitals and stuff.
That was a number of years ago, I think. Well, I've retired six years. We used to have non-emergency transport, but we, revenue came in from that, but Parkview Hospital closed and we did take a significant hit when Parkview closed. And I'm not sure what the policy was on that. But that's something we can discuss during the part of the budget.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to bring it up, so.
And in the last six years that I've been on, Andy, all of the capital budget is funded with reserves. There's been no bonding except for the bridge, which was a
I'd say, yeah.
special thing. So.
I just didn't, I didn't know what the status was. I hadn't followed it for a while.
Which was surprising to me to know that, I mean, there's literally well over a million, sometimes over $2 million allocated each year and it's entirely from reserves and not a burden on the on the tax levy.
Andy, that, that single reserve fund that we used to fool with, with small items accumulating has sort of evolved, as far as I can figure it out, into a number of reserve accounts, a number of which have significantly more money in them than is needed to fund capital items that are projected even out to five years.
We just keep rolling that, do we?
Well, I'd be glad to sit down with you and show you in this capital budget where it is, so you can watch it, because I think there's going to be a discussion about the amounts in those reserve accounts during this council session. I raised it last year. I hope it's going to come up again this year. Because when you keep stuff in a reserve account, you're keeping taxpayer money you're not using at very low interest rates. And so it's a fair question to ask.
I think a number of years ago, there was sidewalk money left over from all these little things. And we got Dale and you were chair, I think, that year, and we said,
It's still there. It's just.
How much money have we got? Let's make it work for us and let's stop, instead of bonding, we, you could buy our equipment with it.
As John said, we have been so conservative with reserve accounts, we haven't bonded anything in years. And that's a wonderful thing to be able to say.
What we shot for back then was to stop bonding stuff, the dump trucks.
Now, my question, and everybody's sick of hearing me, hearing me raise it, is do we have too much in these reserve accounts? And not, and consequently keeping money that the taxpayer has provided in a really low income.
If you can cut my taxes.
Possibly.
Good, good.
Sit down with you.
So it's a timely thing. In fact, on the table back there or online with the items for tonight's agenda is the capital program draft, which talks about the, we've got just under $8 million in our capital reserves and the program outlines how we're going to spend that, how we intend to spend that over the next five years. And tonight, we're going to be setting a public hearing for our next meeting where we're going to dive in and talk about each of the line items in that capital program. So this next meeting is really the time to dive into that.
On the back, the backside, what Ed just talked about, Andrew, on the backside of the the front page for the capital program, it has all of those all broken out by funds. And you'll see that you're, the one fund that Ed was talking about has grown into several million dollars worth of reserve funds there. And you can watch them every year and we're going to talk about them later on today. So tonight.
And while I've got it here, I just, yesterday, two days ago, I sent out a newsletter that I do from time to time that I'm happy to send to anybody who's interested. And one of the items in the newsletter was about our capital budget and how the process works and what the document is tonight and what we do with it. But in that newsletter, I talked about the long-term debt, the bonding, basically, that we've done in the past. And we have less than $900,000 of long-term debt this year, which, putting that in perspective, you know, 10 years ago, we had $6 million. And before that, 15 years ago or so, we had $17 million in debt and now we're down to under a million. Which is awesome. To look at that another way, that's less than $100 a person in town right now, compared to over $2,000 per person that we had 15 years ago. So we've had some really good financial stewardship over the last 15 years or so. We're in, basically, we're in good shape.
Compared to the $60,000 per person of federal debt that we all own.
I can't do much about that from, from this chair.
We do have a public speaker in, from Zoom. Joyce Veyou has her hand up. Can I recognize her?
Please, I would love to hear from Joyce.
Joyce, are you there?
I am here. Are you there?
Yes, go ahead.
A statement about the ARPA money. I know there's probably a lot of entities coming at you, looking for free money to do projects. I'd just like to say that I think that that money is given to the town. All the town people should benefit from it. And if you were going to help fund something like, say, upgrading of a sewer system, a water treatment plant that is only used by a small majority, or a small minority, I should say, of this town, that they would be limited to how much of that money they could get according to the percentage of the town that they service. I know it is approved usage for the funds, but I think that those funds should help benefit all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other comments? Not a lot of public left to speak tonight, but if anyone wants it. All right. I'll assume that there are no more comments, but if anybody wants to jump in last minute, that's fine. Otherwise, we'll move on to the seventh order of business, which is our, the action part of our agenda. First item of which is pretty short. It's our consent agenda. So the first item here says, be it ordered that the March 1st, 2022 consent agenda be adopted.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilor Lawrence and Daniele. On the consent agenda tonight is just one item, which is a liquor license renewal for Athena's Cantina. Does anybody have any comments on the consent agenda or the item on the consent agenda? Wait, removing it, there's only one item. All right. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda as printed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. That was item 52-22. Our next item is 53-22, which is what we just talked about, which is our, setting a a public hearing for our capital program. Councilor Pillsbury, would you mind reading the be it ordered and be it further ordered?
Absolutely. Be it ordered that a public hearing be scheduled for April 5th, 2022, at the town council meetings starting at 6:30 PM to discuss the proposed capital program for fiscal year 2023. Be it further ordered, the copies be distributed equally between the town clerk's office, the town manager's office, and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours. And the notice be placed on Freeport's local cable channel three and the town's website.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Fornier. Any discussion on setting the public hearing? There's, as the town manager held out, there's an item in our packet that lists the different reserve accounts, what they're spent for, what they're intended to be spent on. At the end of that document is also some narrative explaining the different line items for this year. So if anybody has questions between now and next meeting, feel free to call Peter, call Jessica, or whoever you want to talk to about the item in question. But I assume next meeting is when Jessica will give a presentation and walk through the the items on the capital program?
Other business number three tonight.
Close tonight?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We'll talk about it, we'll talk about it next week, too, so don't worry.
Got it.
The meeting after that.
So we have a presentation tonight and a public hearing next time. All right. Any other questions about setting a public hearing? All right, all in favor of setting the public hearing?
That public hearing is a month away?
Two meetings.
Okay.
Oh, two meetings from now, thank you, Jake. April 5th, yes.
Yeah, the actual capital program, just the easiest way to remember it is the, the two months immediately preceding the start of the fiscal year, July 1. So, May and June are set aside for operating budget discussions in our charter, the presentation at the beginning of that period, and then two months of deliberation by the council, and the adoption has to be at the end of those, and the two months immediately preceding those two months, which would be March and April, are set aside in the charter for the capital program discussion, so. About it like, two-month blocks, moving backwards from.
March and April on the.
Yep. So we're a little bit, well, we're, actually, I still thought it, it's the, I got it, it's the 29th of February, I guess I was a little bit wrong on that one, the very beginning right now.
Not this year.
Yep.
All right, so all in favor of setting the public hearing for April 5th?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, that's unanimous. So we'll have a public hearing on April 5th. Our next item, item 54-22, the one that Neil's been waiting for, Councilor Fornier, would you read the "be it ordered"?
Certainly. Be it ordered that the proposed Winslow Park fee schedule be adopted.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Lawrence. Mr. Lyman, would you want to come up and tell us what the updated fee schedule is all about?
So, as far as I know, I've been here for 10 years, we have not updated any fees at the park, and I think it was probably 2009, 2010, they last did anything, and as everybody knows, prices go up occasionally, and payroll goes up, and we're still doing fine, but I think that they want to do a slight increase at this point, so that we don't get to the point where we're shell-shocking people with like, a massive increase at some point down the line. Most of these fees, very few of them have changed, honestly, and we are still at about, we're probably between 25 and 50% under comparables still with these changes, so we've talked about it for about six months at this point through meetings, and there was some back-and-forth on a couple things, primarily seasonal campsites, that was really the only one I think there was a lot of back-and-forth on, but this is what they finally voted on and agreed to, that that was where they wanted to be, so. I'm happy to hear any input from you guys, because that is entirely up to you at the end of the day, so.
I'll just mention that I was on the Winslow Park Commission for the first few months of the discussion, so I fully support the changes, I think, even with the changes and the raises, it's still a bargain, which is fantastic, and the fact that the park is so financially sound on its own is great, so we don't need to.
We're very busy at this point, which has helped keep things steady, our numbers are going up every year, to the point where, basically, if we don't change fees at this point, we will stay stagnant, because nothing can change, because we can't make any more money in the summer. Our campsites are booked at about 97% last year, so there's really nowhere to go, and I think that the biggest one that is hitting us right now is just payroll. I mean, we're not paying high school kids $7 an hour anymore, so we need to stay on top of that if we're going to keep decent employees in.
Councilor Bradley?
Andy, Neil, this may be a little bit off budget, but it, there is a budget item for dogs.
The dogs, what somebody brought up and what everybody agreed on was they wanted to put a fee for, that's for seasonal campsite renters.
Could I, let me just raise an idea for consideration, I have no idea where it goes. I have a dog, as you know, and my dog and my wife and I use Winslow Park to walk almost every day. There's a boulevard along Winslow Park of like-minded, older people who get their exercise walking their dogs in Winslow Park. I think it's, in addition to everything else you do, it's an incredible asset to the people of my age group in particular, although there are families and others who bring their dogs through there. I worry, because not everybody loves a dog the way I love my dog, and there are some dogs, sometimes, that disrupt the peace and quiet for people who are just walking, okay? So I worry sometimes that there will be an effort, and I've heard at times there have been efforts to sort of limit the amount of dog usage of the park. I think that the park could ask people who use the park the way I do for dogs, to make a contribution that matters to the park, in a number of ways, but one could be fees, to give those people standing, just the way campsite users have, because they're contributing to the fiscal needs of the park. And then, make them members, maybe, you know, give them a little sticker that you would like you have on your car, and give them standing to, to suggest rules and regulations, so that the interference that some people make with people who don't own dogs is lessened and controlled. And for people who are members, dog members of the park, give them some status, so that in a quiet way, they could say to somebody's dog who's acting up, "Look, you're going to ruin it for everybody if you don't bring your dog under control." Maybe none of those ideas make sense, but I don't know how to get them.
I would be more than willing to hear any ideas you have, and sit down with you and talk about it. I see a lot of problems with a lot of that. A, who's going to regulate all that? Who's going to decide who can come to the park and who can't, with their dog and do what, at what time? The main road where everybody, where our main problems happen, that's not part of the park, that's a town public road.
Right.
I mean, that's the same as walking your dog on the road you live on, it really has no difference as far as the park is concerned. So, there's a lot of issues involved with that. I don't know how to deal with that, and I've never been able to figure it out after 10 years, so, any suggestions would be very welcome.
I'll come down and talk to you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Neil about the new D?
It'll be pretty easy vote.
All in favor of adopting the D's as proposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was easy.
Great, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
You did a great job, Neil, thank you.
Thank the commission on our behalf, too, I know they've spent a lot of time on.
Yeah, really great to have you there.
Yeah. I missed the Winslow Park Commission, it was actually a really interesting meeting that happened, and it sounds like there's some fun stuff coming up, too, with. New ramp, new playground, and potentially new master plan.
We're going to do it next week, two weeks, and then we're going to hopefully try to get all those, that stuff going.
Nice.
One more question?
Yeah, go.
You know, in this downtown revisioning process, there's been some suggestions, the transportations from downtown to the outlying, call them assets, but attractions that the town has would be a good thing for the town to do, and one of those places is the park. And I wondered if you'd sort of caught on to that, and whether you have any ideas about that?
I haven't heard a word about that, but, I mean, a bus, you know, especially people that live in the downtown area, would be kind of a neat idea, especially for seniors who want to get down there and maybe aren't as capable of transporting themselves.
Would you, would you mind going on the downtown Freeport website and sort of taking a look around for some of these ideas, and see if any of them are either good or bad ideas for the park? I mean, it'd be great to have your input, and we're coming to the end of it.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I'll take a look tomorrow.
Thank you, Neil. All right, our next two items are familiar ones, item 194-21, around shoreline zoning changes, and then item 195-21 around the related changes to the zoning map. Before we move them on to consideration, why don't we have, why don't we hear from Caroline, who can explain what the progress has been and what the next steps are, and then we can decide how we want to act on them?
So I think she's here, let's, I think the recommendation from staff, and we'll explain why this is, is going to be at a table for at least two weeks, but I'll let Caroline explain that process and where that's going. At the end of two weeks, we very well may have a recommendation that, as proposed here, that this goes away, because there has been a proposal, which we've already discussed, and we're going to continue to discuss with a subgroup, that would pull, would completely redo this section as proposed, pull it out into its own ordinance, and that's actually going to have to go back to the planning board if that happens, which is what Caroline's going to talk about here. Are you ready, Caroline?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I can see you, too, you're up on the big screen, so.
Oh, gosh, now I'm seeing myself twice. So, I think you tabled this in December, the reason for tabling it was that, you know, there were some questions raised, you had heard from some residents who had some concerns, so you tabled it, and we were going to take a look, meeting with Councilor Pilch and Councilor Bradley, to see if possibly we could go through it, or if there was a better way to approach shoreline zoning in the town of Freeport. We did meet, and we decided that one approach we could take is what a lot of municipalities do, they have the shoreline zoning in a separate ordinance. It has taken us a while to get that done, our current zoning ordinance is 275 pages, and shoreline zoning is integrated all throughout that. So we have made progress, we have pulled out the proposed text into a standalone document, we are now really at the point where we're going through it with a fine-tooth comb, we have to make sure we're carrying over the definitions, we have to fix all the cross-references and some other terminology. The intent is that we could hopefully have that document in a draft form by the end of the week, and the code enforcement officer and myself could reconvene with Councilor Pilch and Councilor Bradley to kind of go through the document and make sure this is the course we still want to stay forward on. If this is the approach we want to take, we do need to then also create a second document, which is an amended version of the zoning ordinance, to take out any remaining references to shoreline zoning. Since you're creating a new document, I think the best approach would be to send it back to the planning board for a public hearing of those two documents. We have talked about how that does include a significant amount of public notice. At the same time, you've also heard from Coastal Waters that they want to pursue some possible amendments to piers, docks, and wharfs. That is also a shoreline zoning provision, so it actually does also have to go through the planning board and follow that notification process. If everything properly aligns, we could do it all at one time and notify our 800 shoreline zone property owners once, which would be really fabulous for efficiency, to be able to do it at one meeting, realistically, because we're talking about the zoning ordinance and the extensive notification. I don't think we could get this back to you before April, but I think if you put this on your April meeting first agenda, we would have a good idea as to which course you want to take. By tabling this item tonight, you keep this item open, it already came from the planning board through the public hearing process, so if you keep it tabled, you won't have to repeat that. Once you take action on this item, it's done, and it would start over, if that makes sense. That was a real quick summary, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Do you have a date, Caroline? Did you say the first meeting in April to table to that date specific, or were you thinking, because when we had talked earlier, we were thinking about just until the next regular council meeting, two weeks from now? Do you think it would be better to move it until April? I want to correct it, because I said, I said on March.
Yeah, I think it, I think it would be better, because for a planning board, we have to have a public hearing add-in about 12 days before, so I think that's more realistic, that gives us time to give the document to Councilor Bradley and Councilor Pilch, and have some initial discussions. I mean, it's taken so long, the, you know, regulations were adopted in 2015, I'd rather take the extra two weeks and not rush and get it done right, if we're going to do it, it's a big project, and we want to do it once.
So the, the next council action that we anticipate, that's being recommended, if, assuming we table it tonight, the next time we see it, most likely, will kill it in favor of a new recommendation that will come to us from the planning board. So they'll meet presumably, and hopefully in April, with a public hearing, do what they need to do, and then, once they're done with that process, that new item, that will be a new item on our agenda in the following months, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we'll have a really good indication by then, even if for some reason something's not wrapped up, or the Coastal Waters portion's not ready, we can put it off, but that will give ample time to review it and make sure this is the path that we want to take forward and have the planning board go back and look at. And, you know, one of the things we talked about is, are there things in here that we want to go back to DEP and see if there's any flexibility on? And that will give us time to reach out to DEP if there are items that we want to pursue, you know, creating a little more flexible standards, if we're able to.
Thanks. So, so we're going to, we're tabling this tonight just to keep it alive in case we don't go with that plan, so in case we decide to act on what's been done already with everything combined and into one big mess of an ordinance, in case we want to keep that, we're going to table this and keep it alive.
That would be the only purpose.
That's the only purpose, to keep it alive, yep. Do you have any sense, Caroline, given the planning board's schedule, since they only meet once a month, which meeting they would take this up on, and when they would set their public hearing, and then when it would wind up back on our table?
Sure, so they do it a little bit differently, they don't have to set a public hearing one meeting and then have it at another hearing. We would place it on the agenda as a public hearing and do all that notification. And like I said, we really have to have that document ready to go 12 days before, when that legal ad hits the paper, and then we need to get legal notice out to our 800 people, you know, seven to 10 days before. The next, planning board's meeting tomorrow, but obviously, they're not going to make that agenda, so the next meeting would be April 6. You know, if we were close but not there, I think we could ask the planning board if they would be willing to meet on an alternate date, but their typical meeting date is the first Wednesday of every month.
And you think this would be able to make it into their April 6 agenda?
I think if everything aligns perfectly, and no other projects pop up, I think, you know, it's, it's doable, we're kind of shooting for that goal. You know, there is the Coastal Waters portion of it, they meet the second Wednesday of every month. If Coastal Waters was still working through their amendments, I would recommend that we wait and do it all at one time, just due to the notification, I think it's more efficient for the, the public, you know, going to multiple boards and committees, but, yeah, I think, even if you table it till April 5th, I think on April 5th, even if it ends up for some reason not going to the planning one on the 6th, you're going to know how you want to move forward.
Got it, that makes sense to me. And I would strongly encourage to agree that we can, this has been around for a while, and it's a lot of work that's been done, and still a lot of work that needs to be done. And I know that you've probably heard from the same residents that I've been hearing from about, you know, "Hey, I want to build my house, but I can't, because you guys haven't acted on this," which I get and I sympathize with, but I also want to make sure that we do it correctly, so that it doesn't wind up back on our table in the future, or we wind up on the wrong end of some action because we didn't follow the procedures correctly, so. So I understand why it needs to be done, I just hope that we can get it done, planning and Coastal Waters in April, so that we get it back up here before the end of April, and we can act on it before the summer season.
Yeah, just to add, you know, for shoreline zoning, we have our own standards, which don't, aren't totally consistent with the state standards right now, so if somebody comes in for something in the shoreline, the code officer is enforcing our ordinance, and he has to enforce, you know, the state requirements for shoreline zoning. You know, any of these times we make these changes, which, again, we're already enforcing, it hurts some people and it helps some people. The new language removes the volume calculation, so some of our people that have small houses on small lots, this would actually allow them to add on more. And then also, we had talked about before, how part of this is amending the zoning map, and there are some areas that we can now take out of Resource Protection 1, which somebody can't do anything in Resource Protection 1, a house is not permitted, it's non-conforming, and so those residents, or property owners, are really eager to get this done, and yes, they have been reaching out, and I have encouraged them, when you take this back up, to, you know, come participate in the public process.
Perfect, yeah. Councilor Fornier?
I have a question, with this existing ordinance we have now, Caroline, are we enforcing it as of the date, or has everything been put on hold?
No, you are enforcing it. The state adopted the shoreline zoning regulations in 2015, the town of Freeport did not pursue updating it in 2018, 2019. The town went through the process, ordinance amendments were drafted, but it got sent back by the state, so we essentially had to go back and, and start all over.
I guess my concern is, it needs to get done as soon as possible, but I don't want to rush it through. Boy, we're at that pivotal point, so I hope, you know, I know some people aren't going to be happy, but there'll be maybe more people not quite as happy if we don't address the issues, thank you.
Can't leave it as it is.
I did say to, you know, one of the counselors, it's a lot of work, but as I'm sitting here going through it and reading the definitions, you know, I think this is really the right approach, it's a lot more user-friendly. You know, now we're talking about going through 60 You know, now we're talking about going through 60 pages instead of 275 pages. So I do think it's a good use of our time and I think the end product is going to be better and easier to understand for our residents.
Yeah, you're right. Councillor Daniele?
If the plan is to move away from this, can you just, like, what's the harm in adopting it tonight? I know that it takes away the opportunity for us to make changes to it and not have to read public notice, but if the plan is to public notice again to make the big change, if we adopted it now, wouldn't those residents be able to build right away? It would fix that and then we're going to change it all anyway? So adopting this would be a two-month adoption and we're already enforcing this based on the state, right?
Yeah, you could adopt it as is. I think last time you had heard from some residents who had some concerns and they wanted us to, you know, take a step back and be able to look at some things and, you know, better understand how some of the regulations impact them. The thing to keep in mind is that once you guys approve it, it then has to go to DEP and once they receive it, they have an additional 45 days to review and comment or comment with conditions. So it is still a long process.
But so if we adopt it now, 45 days for DEP and we're going to be coming out with our other one anyway, so I guess I don't really see the point of holding it just to keep the placeholder in case the new way we think we're going to go doesn't work, in which case we'd have to adopt it pretty much anyway?
It's really up to you. You can adopt it today and we can move forward as it is today. Or we can, we can adopt it and then we can amend it, you know, in a new format. Or we can wait a couple of weeks and just do it once, you know, the same thing. Look, we go through this process and then, within the 45 days amendments, again, we're going to have to still send another version to DEP so then we're going to have this other pending version. But yes, that is an option. It's a current active pending item before you.
Councillor Bradley?
Yeah, I take Jake's suggestion to heart. What's the harm? And the harm is that at least as I went through this, it's incomprehensible. You know, what you'd be adopting tonight is absolutely unintelligible. I was a marine attorney my whole career. I don't understand what it does because it's so integrated and so confusing for the user to read. I'm not sure what we'd have. Maybe Nick would know, you know, but nobody in the beginning would know and it would be a process to get through it and there'd be a lot of arguments and debates and discussions, which is why Dan and I suggested, split it apart, make it simple. Do the shoreline zoning in one place where people can know what you're talking about and then have the zoning ordinance in the other place for other things. So I don't think it makes sense substantively, even though procedurally I understand the point.
I agree, and if it's unintelligible, then we shouldn't do it anyway just because it's unintelligible and creates a lot of confusion. So let's get it right and send it. That's been one of my points all along, so.
I don't know that I'd use the word unintelligible, but it can certainly be simplified. But I agree that passing something is a temporary measure and then passing something new, while the first item is still under review, creates a very complicated situation for anybody who would be applying for a permit under this temporary ordinance that's been approved but not yet, so I'll call it ratified by the state. And then a new ordinance hot on the heels of that, it creates a complex potential legal situation that I would be hesitant to put somebody in or put the town in. I'd have two ordinances working their way through that overlap with each other. So it's a good, as always, Jake, you're looking for the middle ground, which I appreciate.
Well, the, I feel like one of the residents responded that they would be looking at alternative options if we don't also. You know, so you're talking like, oh, we might have a potential legal issue if we did do it. Well, I'm thinking we might have a potential legal issue if we don't do it also. So I think there are two sides, but.
Caroline, a related question to the email that I know I got. I know one of the issues that you just brought up was about the Resource Protection 1 and whether or not we can change the zoning map to free up the parcels that are not going to be in Resource Protection 1 in the new plan. And the zoning map is a separate item than the zoning ordinance? And you explained this before, but maybe you can explain it again. Why is it that we can't pass the new zoning map without passing the corresponding ordinance changes?
They are related and you do need to make the text changes to support the map changes and DEP has to review them both and sign off on the whole thing. It makes a lot more sense to do it as one complete package so that your text and map align.
Okay.
And it's bird habitat that we have, we are able to remove from Resource Protection 1. That's making a difference for some of our property owners.
Right. The difference being they can build a house or they can't build a house.
They would be able to build a house. If they could meet all the other requirements of the underlying zoning.
So the suggestion on before us from Caroline is to table this item till our April 5th meeting, which would be two meetings away, with the intention of most likely abandoning this in favor of a new, simpler, cleaner ordinance and map that we hope the planning board would take up on their meeting the following day, April 6th, followed hopefully by Coastal Waters and their changes so that by the end of April, we'd be able to have this back on our table and get it. Well, we need to set a public hearing and then get it passed, so we need two meetings on our schedule to do that.
I am kind of hopeful that the coast, I would say that I think my direction is going to be that the coast, unless somebody tells me differently from the council, the coastal waters changes should happen at the same time as the shoreline zoning, because I think it gets way too burdensome on residents to have two back-to-back planning board meetings with substantial, when it's targeting the same group. So you're going to have to be paying attention to both the shoreline stuff at the meeting in April and then you'd have to pay attention to coastal water stuff at the meeting in May, and it may feel overwhelming to some coastal residents, for some of those 800 shoreline property owners, I think if they weren't done at the same time.
Is that consistent with your thought process, Caroline?
Yeah, definitely. I think we would want Coastal Waters to look at the draft amendments when they get them back from the town attorney. I think there was talk of them wanting to do a site walk, so if they want to do that, we would want their committee on board to, you know, recommend the language. We would want to do it at one time. Because it's a zoning provision, we need to follow the zoning ordinance amendment procedures under state law. But furthermore, the planning board has a policy that anytime we do anything in the shoreline zone, we need to notify everybody. So it makes more sense instead of doing, you know, an April and a May meeting or whatever it could be, to do that all at one time for efficiency, for many reasons, and to have the DEP sign off on the whole package at one time.
So from a staff perspective, I think we'll focus on making sure that, first of all, the shoreline zoning stuff happens and gets, is ready for April, but I think we need to work with Coastal Waters to make sure that they have a chance to comment on the proposed changes that we talked about two meetings ago.
Right.
Before and get that done by the April 6th planning board meeting.
Right.
So just to clarify, Coastal Waters had amendments that they want to bring forward, but piers, docks, and wharves are typically, if the town has the option to regulate them, Freeport has. Most towns have it in their zoning ordinance or their shoreline zoning ordinance and it's under the previa of the planning board. We do it a little bit differently, but those standards still do need to comply with state shoreline zoning. So because Coastal Waters is looking at amending theirs, we also need to make sure those standards are consistent with the shoreline zoning, which again, has to follow that same zoning process, if that makes sense.
And get reviewed by DEP.
Right, right. And the question, which we don't need to answer tonight, but I want to make sure that you're both comfortable with, is if piers, wharves, and docks are regulated in a separate ordinance that's managed by Coastal Waters, is Coastal Waters making a recommendation to the planning board to update a land use-related ordinance? Or does Coastal Waters make the recommendation to either ordinance committee or council to update that? And if they need to make the recommendation to planning board, which I think is where you were going, was they should have the recommendation in before their April 6th meeting?
Correct.
Yes. The second part you mentioned, yep. And it's the planning board's job then to recommend it to the council as the statute was.
The planning board will recommend the Coastal Waters changes, yep.
When it has to do with shoreline zoning.
The zoning amendments can come from the planning board, project review board, an applicant, or the council, but we would need those Coastal Waters amendments to include in the draft of the shoreline amendments package that we publicly circulate. So we do have some logistics that Peter and I need to work out between the boards to make sure that the timing best aligns, to keep this on track. And again, there is that question of a site walk and if, when that's going to get done.
Councillor Bradley?
Yeah, the first point is the one Caroline just raised, that we have seen the Coastal Waters recommendations, they've been in front of us and we've been reluctant to act on them because we don't understand them, because we don't, haven't been on-site to see how they apply. And my understanding is that a site walk was being scheduled and it hasn't occurred. So that's got to be in this somewhere. The other question I have is why, why do we have to, what action does the council take before the planning board addresses the standalone shoreline zoning? In other words, it's just you and me taking a look at it, Dan. We aren't the council. I mean, I'm not going to.
And we're only taking a look at it because I had a couple of questions and you had other questions as well, yep.
Right. So it seems to me that it could go right to the planning board and.
That's what we're saying, yep.
No, because we were talking about bringing it to us.
Yep.
No?
Planning board first and then back to us in April.
I misunderstood, thank you. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yep, and Coastal Waters, if they could do a site walk, we can go on their site walk, so we don't need to schedule our own.
Yeah, that's going to be the logistical link that we're going to have to time their meeting and review, so, yep.
All right. Councillor Lawrence?
I make a motion that we take Caroline's recommendation and table this till the second, or first meeting in April.
Second. Both items.
Both items, yes.
Item 194, 21 and 195, 21.
Both items.
Councillor Fornier, thank you. Any debate around, Councillor Daniele?
Did staff originally tell us way back when to adopt this before we decided to table it?
They presented it and then we had questions, because it was a pretty voluminous document and at the time, a couple of us said, can we have a minute to review it in more detail?
But the planning board, but just quickly go through the process for me, maybe? Like, the planning board saw this, they said, yes?
Yep, so this, so this started back, Caroline mentioned, at 2018, 2016, something like that. And it got put on pause and then we hired a consultant to work with the planning board to develop these standards about a year ago. And last fall, the planning board brought forward these to the council. There was major concerns, moderate concerns, I would say, in some parts of it about the structure. Ed's words, what he had said earlier about it being incomprehensible. Unintelligible, incomprehensible. I think it's moderately incomprehensible, some parts of it for sure. Dense, dense is probably the best way to describe it. Very dense and too interlaced with the zoning ordinance were the concerns. So that's why it didn't end up getting passed by the council. I think you're echoing one of, what might have been one of my suggestions back in November when we talked about this, Councillor Daniele, which is you could just adopt it as proposed and then amend it downwards, but there were too many concerns from, I think, Councillor Pilch and Councillor Bradley brought those up, but I think everybody up here had at least a little bit of head scratching going on about the content. So I don't think anybody was comfortable with that suggestion then, which is why the pause button got hit and now we've got to, if we do a substantive change to it, the whole, what's really, the muck in the gears here is that it's got to go back to the planning board if it's substantively changed from what was originally, what they originally recommended. Because if we adopted something substantively changed from the planning board, there's a due process argument that the public didn't get a chance to weigh in at the planning board and people are going to be implemented by, impacted by this, so it's pretty certain there'll be a challenge if somebody's negatively impacted to their building rights and things like that. So we want to be 100% bulletproof on the way the process will be go through.
And I think we need to get it right because bad law is worse than no law, as far as I'm concerned. If we don't get it right and we just pass laws, we'll just pass this and fix it. They don't tend to get fixed, so.
Right. I mean, it's bad to adopt bad ordinances anyways. It's really bad to adopt bad ordinances when you know that somebody's going to be negatively impacted and get challenged and you haven't done the correct procedure. That's just asking to lose a challenge, so.
So the motion on the table is to table these two items until our April 5th meeting. Any other comments before we take a vote? All right, all in favor of tabling these items?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Nay, rather? So Councillor Daniele is a nay. All right. Thank you for the discussion. Thank you, Caroline, for the work and look forward to seeing this in April. Okay, that concludes our action items for tonight's agenda. We have three other business items followed by an executive session. The first of the three items was initially raised by either Councillor Bradley, I think, maybe with support from Councillor Fornier, about an auxiliary fire station. So we currently have one fire station in town. The question is, do we need or should we have a second or more? I talked with Vice Chair and Town Manager about how we go about exploring that. And what we'd like to do is send it to the municipal facilities committee, which, if I have that right, is Daryl, John, and Matt, with the suggestion that they include Councillor Bradley on all their meetings and deliberations, because I know he's got a lot to say about the matter. But the reason for doing that is, my guess is it needs analysis, study, there's a lot of questions that we're likely to have, so best to have that work done in a committee and point staff at the right research that needs to be done if that's the direction we take and then that committee can bring it back to council. Councillor Fornier?
Can I give a five-minute dissertation on how we got here?
Sure.
Fifteen, 10 years ago now, we wanted to challenge the ISO rating. The ISO rating is what we pay for insurances on our downtown businesses and what we pay for insurance in our residential homes. At the time, we challenged it, our rural rating for the town was a nine and the highest it could go is a 10. Our rating for the in-town areas was, at that time, I believe, a five. So we did the test, we were able to flow in the rural areas 1,000 gallons a minute for a minimum of two hours without interruptions and we successfully did that. So that allowed that rating to go from a level nine down to a level six, which saved.
Lower is better.
Lower the better, correct. Which saved, you know, property owners down there, somebody that were within five miles distance of this station here. Once you cross that threshold of over five miles, the rate went up significantly. So what we looked at was some of the response times and we had a consultant come in and worked with us and we identified the area of Flying Point, Wolf's Neck, Alora Flying Point as that area where we did not cover that area through either a fire station or was close by a mutual aid, which we have the northern part of town covered by Pownall and covered by Durham because they're within the five-mile districts. Brunswick at the time, even with a news station coming in, is going to be very close, you know, probably not to cover that. So when I was chief, we met with Wolf's Neck Farms. They generously would give us land. We identified the area at that time where we thought it would go. I had plans drawn up for Two Bay Station. They had a small kitchen in it or whatever for that and it was the stick-built facility that would house one engine with a room for either a rescue boat or whatever. So it was discussed a number of years ago at the council level. We started to get momentum and then it kind of priorities changed or whatever. So there's been a lot of work done and I think when we look at the value of what we have along our property in those particular areas, we really have some significant value down there. We have a number of homes that are very high-valued and that's how this whole discussion came. So I was very pleased when Councillor Bradley said he wanted to step back up and kind of revisit this. I think it's a timely discussion and I would certainly be glad as part of the municipal facilities to kind of get this moving forward and take another hard look at it. Thank you.
It's sort of just open discussion here at this point. Anybody have any other things that they'd want the municipal facilities committee to look at while they look at this?
Daryl mentioned high property values, but what happened?
Thank you, Mr. Jake. What happens is, and it's happened to a lot of people and they aren't necessarily people who have a lot of money. They just have, they just have homes that are worth a lot of money and their insurance bills go up sometimes $2,000 or $3,000 because they're 5.1 miles away from the station. And so my thought is, and I don't know how practical it is, is we do a survey of those homes that would be affected and we see we can't get some contribution to the cost because of the savings to the insurance bills. We'd both be willing to present that to the District 2 people. And the other part is the farm. I know that. I know that the, I have no idea whether the farm still has property that they'd be willing to commit to this, but I think they'd be open to the question, certainly. And they are now, as they have grown and developed, they have their own issues about fire insurance, but more than that, they have people, you know, and they're young people, and they're people who, my guess is, would be maybe anxious to be involved in, you know, both rescue and fire fighting operations from a substation out there. I don't know if any of that is a matter of fact, but it just makes sense to me, is that community becomes vibrant, and there's lots of people who are living in, I don't wanna call it temporary, but what do you call it, RVs and things that are year-round on the site now, because they need those people to do things on the farm. So, I think we've got, it's another one of those perfect opportunities to explore. I don't know what the answers are gonna be, but I appreciate everybody's willingness to work on it.
Yep. Getting more folks on the fire department rescue, I think would be a good thing for the town in general, and I know that's one of the issues that's been brought up, is building a fire station doesn't necessarily mean that it's staffed, so if we can get folks down there to staff it, that might kill two birds with one stone, so that'd be an interesting thing to look at, sure. All right, yeah, so we look forward to seeing what you come up with and what direction we're gonna take there. Go ahead, Counselor Egan.
Peter, is there ability to get a detailed map about, of the community, of all of the areas that are beyond this five-mile? So, we're not talking about just one area, because I, my sense is that there's a lot of territory within our community that's beyond five miles from our fire station.
Yeah, we did that before. I think there were three areas, Staples Point, Fog Point, Winslow Park area, some areas of Spark Cove, your neighborhood, and a good chunk of Wolf's Neck, the end of Wolf's Neck past the farm, and lower Flying Point.
Do we already have a map that shows exactly where that is, by five miles by road?
We created that about five years ago. I can recreate it, it's pretty easy. There were three general areas, Flying Point Road in Ed's neighborhood, your exact road, a little bit past where you are, I think, and Staples Point, Spark Cove, and then the Wolf's Neck and Flying Point, the lower parts of both of those peninsulas.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So, the bulk, I think, is in Counselor Bradley's district, with a little bit in the Spark Cove, sorry, Staples Point neighborhood, and a very limited amount up in your neighborhood, John.
Well, we could just get that map for whenever this group gets together, that would help.
Counsel Fornier?
It may take a little digging. We had a full report that laid that out, did response times, did automatic responses. Maybe Paul can find it. Hopefully, they hung onto it.
Yeah, I remember the analysis, it wasn't rocket science, it could be easily recreated in a day or two, I think. So, I'm remembering, it's a little bit foggy, it was about six, five and a half, six years ago, but I remember doing the analysis and what we put in there, which was, it can easily be recreated.
All right. Item number two, under other business of our three items, is here because Counselor Bradley suggested putting it here, so I'll let you introduce it, say what you like.
Thank you. When I asked this to be on the agenda, I was thinking ahead of what the process is going to be in terms of receiving and dealing with the principal group plan, and the thought was that if we wait until, my thought was that if we wait until we got the plan and voted on it in May, that we would've lost some time that we could have spent putting together a group, whether it's at the council level, the FEDC level, or a subgroup of the council to advise the council about priorities and funding opportunities, which are very closely related considerations as you go forward. Since convincing the chair, or whoever I had to convince to put this on, a lot's happened in terms of thinking about this issue. And this morning at an FEDC meeting, and Mary, I guess, is gonna be on in a second?
She might be here, yeah.
She's not.
Not yet, but she's expected to be.
Yeah, well, let me just, I'll just sort of highlight it, and then she can, you know, the same discussion came up, and there was general agreement that, you know, there needed to be a point for taking the principal group report, looking at the opportunities that identified, the funding potentials that existed, matching them up, doing a, planning for a timeline and for prioritization. And FEDC, in talking about it, thought that this new gentleman Brett Richardson that they've hired is very well-qualified to do this, and FEDC would like to commit his time to being the lead on that effort going forward. So, that's what Mary's gonna say, I think. That makes sense to me. You know, I've talked to him a couple of times, he seems eminently qualified and experienced in these kinds of things with funding and with actually implementation. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that, or you wanna meet him and see that for yourself, but if FEDC would take the lead with Brett, then I still think, with no disrespect, but it's very hard for us at this podium to sort through these technical issues and make prioritization decisions. Once we see what our alternatives are, we're very good at deciding what we wanna do, but we're not great at having the in-depth kind of analysis. So, I think it would make sense to have, you know, a nimble group of people who have been involved, and maybe some others who are stepping up and offering to be involved, who have real interest and commitment to the downtown revisioning process, and have that committee to sort through things so that when it comes before us, a lot of that analysis has occurred, and the options and alternatives have been made clear to us, without us having to spend the time to get there. So, that's what it was all about. I think the FEDC suggestion's a good one to start, and I think if we accept that recommendation from Mary and FEDC, then Brett, who won't be on job for a couple of weeks, but frankly, I'll tell you, is already working on the job. He's answering every phone call he gets, and he's been through Design Week, and he's been through all the documents, and so, the only other piece to it is, I think there needs to be a staff piece to it, clearly, and whether it's a money piece, and that be, or a Peter piece, or a Caroline piece, I think that's up to Peter and the staff to think about and make a recommendation to this effort. But that'd be sort of like how I would see it going, but I don't know that I'm right. I just wanted to have the conversation before we found out that we had waited a couple of months and lost the time, where we could've had this group in place, doing preliminary work to get ready for the kinds of decisions we're gonna have to make.
Thanks.
Yep, I think it's a valid point. I don't want to wait until May 3rd to start thinking about, what do we do after this? I would like to see the council be more involved in what's going on with the project than we traditionally have been from the beginning. I don't think that's a fault of the council, I think it's just a fault of the way we had set up the process, so I'm hopeful that we can change that. But to Ed's point, it's difficult to do a lot of that kind of analysis work during a meeting. That's partly why we have these two workshops scheduled. So, my kind of take is pretty similar to Ed's, slightly different, that I really wanna dig in with you guys on these workshops and say, what is this thing? The first workshop's coming up in just a few weeks, so that'll be a great opportunity. As Ed mentioned, the new FEDC guy doesn't start for another two weeks, so I'm hopeful that he can be the guy that can run point on getting grants and coordinating efforts across lots of different initiatives that might go beyond just downtown, but certainly focused on the downtown. We've also got, you know, I see Greg here tonight from Complete Streets, who's been very vocal about saying, hey, a lot of this affects streets, and a lot of this affects plans that we've got in motion, and he's also volunteered to say, hey, I've managed a lot of big projects, so what can I do to help? So, you know, there's a, as Ed's saying, there's a lot of people willing to step up. So, I think the trick is just, how do we get the right folks at the table at the right time? I think for the last year or so, we've been a little challenged, because we've got, we've got big committees, and doing things by committee is sometimes difficult, but, so how do we streamline the process of it, but keep it open to the people who need to be involved in the decision-making? So, it's a challenge. Mary and I and the rest of the team are focused on kinda coming back with a recommendation. Personally, I don't think I'll be ready to have that recommendation until after our first workshop, because I wanna hear from you guys. So, that's where I land on it. But if that's the case, then we'd be taking up a similar kind of item around our April 5th workshop, if not, or April 5th meeting, if not the workshop on March 29th. So, happy to hear what you guys think and how you guys wanna move forward.
Well, I think the workshop is the first step. I've kind of basically stayed out of it, because I wanted to be neutral, and when I've had a lot of time invested, say, yeah, this is a great idea, and so I can watch and see what's going on. So, I'm looking forward to the workshops, and I think coming out of the workshops, we'll have a much better idea of what we need to carry on, so...
Thanks, Jim, that's helpful.
And then there's also the funding part of that, and I don't know if we're gonna talk about that, but there was something that came up in the last week or two, we've discovered, right?
With FEDC and the...
Not FEDC, but funding from federal government, that I think Greg is kinda on top of, but to put a tiger team together, so that when we get, we get these opportunities and we discover them, we can go right through them, and looking at this one, I don't think we can even get close to having it in there, but, or having a chance to get it in, but we could go through the exercise so that the next time, we're ready.
Yeah, that's a great point, because it reminds me to share my thoughts about grants in general, because I feel like, you know, last summer, we tried to do this, and we hired an intern to help identify grant opportunities, which we were partly successful with, but my gut feel, supported by a very limited amount of research, is that there are grant opportunities that we miss out on as a town, because it takes a lot of effort to apply for some of these grants. Some of them are easy and just take a couple of pages of writing. Many of them are, you know, multiple pages and sections with supporting data, like the one that, I don't know if Greg was the first one to bring it to our attention, but I know he and Adam have been working on it, but it's, you know, that's a $5 to $25 million grant that requires a match of at least $1 million of town funds. So, that one is a big one, and when we look around, you know, Adam has been doing a great job getting us a lot of grants that are transportation-related, but there are other grants out there. GP Cog is around and has reached out to us to offer support, and we've reached out to them. Different counselors have talked to them as well, I know Ed's talked to them as well. So, there's stuff going on in the works, but my hope is that, as we get into our operating budget too, and talk about staffing and communications, and what's the role of FEDC and what do we want them to do, that we identify a person, or a team, or a group, that's our grant group, that says, okay, something is coming up around the corner, let's stick this team on it and see if they can help us do it.
Yeah, this is exactly the kind of conversation we should be having, you know, and the only difference that I have that I think I'm hearing expressed is that I see the process of prioritization of projects, which is, what do you want? What do you like? What's gonna make the town better, as being integral and connected essentially to the question of what funding is available to support those priorities. So, you may have a great idea, call it the Boulevard, but you can't find any way to fund it. So, you know, that goes off your list for that reason. So, it seems to me that the same group of people needs to be talking about both funding and prioritization of projects, that principal group will put on the table as alternatives for us. And I don't, again, I'm not going to the wall about this, but I think that it would be reasonably easy to start the process of identifying who that group is, who should be on it. Greg stood up and said he's got great qualifications and wants to help, and then there are others, and there's a street gang, and then there's counselors, and there's people, you know, we could put the group together well in advance of our first workshop, not, and just get them, sort of get their feet wet with, you know, what some of the things they're gonna have to know are before they can hit the ground running. Not to do anything, not to make any decisions, but to get ready to help advise the council after the council's had its workshops. So, I still don't see any reason to wait, but I also understand that there's a process that we've all been waiting for. We're all waiting for this principal group report, and, you know, we're all anxious to see how they've distilled all the information they got during Design Week, and how that's gonna help us. But whenever they come up, we're still gonna have to have this group ready to respond to it, and I'd like to see us do it sooner than later, but I'll be quiet, I have just one voice.
Yeah, I, my feeling is, to do what we're doing, and the process we're doing, but these projects that I think principal groups come up are not like, okay, we need to get it done right now. So, it's gonna take time, so if we have a little bit of time, I don't wanna drop the ball, but we have time to distill it and say, hey, these are what we wanna do here, and that's actually what we do, is probably just prioritize each job, and then go out, look for funding to see which ones we can do. I mean, these are the ones we'd like to do first, but if the funding is for this one, well, we can get the funding for that one. So, it is, it's a huge undertaking, and it's gonna take a lot of thought, but before we do, we have to know what it is. So, and having the team in place to go look at it, I don't think there's any harm in trying to put that together. Here's we go, here's the group that's gonna help us get the funding. Here are the projects, now we need to get the funding. And to have that team, the funding team together, which is what I think we're really talking about, will go a long way to keeping the ball rolling.
Is there a way for us to take this conversation that we're having right now and encapsulate it to a sentence or two, and hand it to Mary and Brett? I know Brett, and I think he's gonna be an excellent FEDC director, and I think he is just the right person for what we're talking about. So, is there a way to take this and informally have at least some outlawing to come together, so that we have something to chew on on the 29th? I'm as enthusiastic as anybody about wanting to keep the momentum. I think we have momentum right now, and the whole month of March going by without another public event or some other thing might be somewhat detrimental to that momentum. So, I think it would be good if we had, even if it's just an informal look for Mary and Brett, and maybe a couple of other people that have been involved closely, to just kinda search through both the, you know, the plan elements that are coming, and this conversation that we're having here about having to identify a list of potential sources, and then we can start sort of matching, you know, this source goes to this kind of project. Just to have something chewing on, informal, not official, not the priority list, but just a list. I'm just wondering if we can get a little bit of action.
You're saying, give them...
Give them the endorsement from us, that we're having this conversation right now, to at least get started on something, and Greg's willing to step up, which is great, and we can at least have a list of, I mean, I don't even know what that list looks like right now. I don't know if any of us knows what that looks like, so...
We should know in a couple of weeks, yeah. Darrell's waiting.
What I would like to see come out, and I would like to have the people that have been working on it with a lot of knowledge, come out with a list of wants and a list of needs. There's probably some very important things, you know, that we really need, and for me, that's the ones I'm gonna be priority on to make this better. Now, there's gonna be wants, and, you know, I think every department head and everyone else, we should go through that, and I think it's one of the challenges here as a council. We need to know what the needs are, what's gonna have the biggest effect to come out, and I think a lot of people have that knowledge, they could share with us. And to me, I think that would allow us to even focus down more if that, some sort of document like that could come forward.
Yeah, ultimately, I think it's up to us to determine the wants and needs. Hopefully, we'll get good advice and good recommendations from folks.
Yes, ultimately, we will, but I think, but I think they would have some background, they've been involved as you have, so I'm gonna have a lot more, I'll be able to pour more knowledge from that sort of discussion with that type of list.
Yeah, Jake, you can wait.
I was gonna say, maybe someone to go and look and see what kind of grants are out there, and maybe not ones we can't get right now, but it'll give us an idea of what is possible.
Jake?
Just an idea on a first initial meeting, could be just committee chairs with FEDC, couple of counselors, I don't know, I think that might've been done before, but just bring everybody back again, and that might keep the momentum going, because those committee chairs know everybody in their committees, which then, you know, will disseminate information really well, so...
Greg, is there anything you wanted to, you've been patiently waiting and participating, is there anything you wanted to add to the conversation that we haven't touched on already?
Hi, Greg Mieshof, report, and I'm the Chair of the Complete Streets Committee. You may not know my background, but I was the Vice President at Anthem, led the analytics unit, division, and boy, every day was a new fire drill. You know, somebody would come and say, you know, we need 20 of your people, we need them tomorrow, and we'd have to come up with a plan on how we are going to backfill those resources or use those resources. So, I kinda see this sort of broken up into two distinct pieces. The first is leveraging the visioning information and turning that into priorities, and I believe, you know, that's what Mary and her group have been doing, along with principal group. And then the second piece is taking those priorities... with principal group. And then the second piece is taking those priorities and getting the, the funding to actually make it happen. It's the execution piece. And that, that latter piece is where I think, you know, I can be of help. Um, my thought is that we would, we really need a readiness plan. And, and so the next time that we want to write a grant proposal, we'll be ready to do that. And I just wrote down a list of, short list of things that would need to be part of the readiness plan. That would be something that we would deliver to you and say, the next time something comes along, this is how we'd do it. So we'd need, um, like you said, the town volunteers and the roles needed to complete the proposal. Uh, we'd need to develop time and resource estimates. We'd have to identify the town employees. That would be required to submit the proposal. So that would be, hey, you know, we need the town engineer for four weeks, 30% of their time. And we would come to you and say, this is what we need and you would help us figure out how to do that. A significant portion of grant writing is benefit and cost analysis and that is an enormous effort and that takes a lot of resources and a lot of time. Uh, we would need to determine the consultant resources that we would want to use and, and pay for that would help us with the cost benefit analysis. We may need project management support. We may need grant writers, um, or graphic design for the proposal. If you've seen any of these significant proposals, they're beautiful. You know, you're not just filling out a form. Uh, this is, you know, multi-page with, with graphics and maps and everything that go with it to, to present. Uh, estimated funding, uh, required of the town. You'd need a complete high-level project plan. You need to secure letters of support from your congresspeople. So people to either write or make connections with our senators and congressmen to, to back it up. You absolutely have to have that for these large proposals and determine and work, you know, with state resources and engaging them. So all of these things here, I would see as sort of creating that readiness plan. So the next time we write it, we could say, okay, off we go. We know who all the people are. We're going to get them together. We're going to gather up these resources and present a plan to you. That's kind of how I would see it playing out.
Wise words, I think, yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
I think we should accept his offer to help us.
That sounds like, we just appointed somebody.
Make a motion?
Can I ask Greg a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, um, Greg, everything you said makes sense to someone who doesn't have any idea how to do it, right? Um, me. Uh, but, um, you know, having been involved in thinking through major economic activities, it, it seems to me that before you could get to that stage, you sort of have to know what you want to do.
Yes.
And to some extent, you have to know what the funding is for doing the things you want to do to know whether or not you, you should be, your readiness group should be responding to a, a grant application for that. That's sort of how I'm thinking.
Yeah.
So who is it? You know, you, you've been around, you, you've watched the town, you think we up here can make those, uh, and no disrespect to any of us. I mean, you know, you've seen the process work. Who, who is it in the town that ought to be looking roughly at the funding opportunities and the principal, which principal group's going to identify for us as well as some we all know about? And you've found some and I've found some and our, is some of them and we all know some of them, including bonding and TIFs and other things that we can talk about. But who is it that it's going to take that first cut at what a plan might look like and the timing of it and the scope of the investment that the community will have to consider doing if we, if we bite into it? Who, who does that? Does the readiness group do that? Does the FEDC do that? Do, do we need a committee like I've been suggesting to do it? I don't care what the answer is, but I think it's important to make the right decision initially rather than stumble around about it.
It's a chicken or egg question.
Okay.
I think it's a circular question and you just have to start somewhere. I would start with this readiness group and have them sort of, and, and I think it can be run in parallel too. You don't need, you don't need to know what the recommendations for the town are going to be to start working on establishing a readiness plan, right? Um, and you, you may or may not need the funding information going in. That's what we need this readiness group to kind of help flush out, if, if that makes any sense. If you, I, I'm not sure that there's any one person or any small group of people that could do that. I would just get some of these people together and say, this is the charge. Let's produce something for the town.
Thanks. Hell, I mean, I, I, I don't know whether you're, whether the group I'm talking about is the readiness group, but some group to help sort through the options for projects and the funding opportunities and make some general recommendations with respect to, to how to go forward. And then as you go forward, you'll learn more and about who the people ought to be and what, what ought to be in place.
Yeah, yeah. Now you may find as certain other committees, you know, come forward, they may say, that's us.
Yeah.
You know, and I think you'll, you'll probably get that maybe even tonight.
Yeah. Speaking of which, it's a good segue. All right. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, Mary's joined us. I know she's kind of out of town and had to get some things ready in order to join us on Zoom and I think she's ready now. So Mary, if you want to add to the conversation, it's a good time.
Yeah. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Um, thank you, Greg and, um, counselors for, you know, the whole communication about this. I, I have to tell you, I couldn't be more excited that this is a topic at the council. You know, think about this a year and a half ago when we started talking about the downtown vision and just getting momentum. I'm thrilled that there's this kind of momentum. So first I have to say that. Um, secondly, I think what I would say is I'm, I'm kind of in the camp that Greg is in, that there are two really large tasks to be done here. Um, and in the, uh, the request of expediency, because you're right, I don't want to lose the community's excitement, engagement and whatever moving forward this. Principal has a process that they're rolling out, the how to bring, um, their ideas to us and how for us to prioritize. And that's sort of one group of work, um, that's got to be done in the next really month to six weeks. Um, but in addition, Greg, I think you're right that starting up a, the, I'm, I'm sorry, what did you call it? The funding group, um, to start to think about how do we go about that? Um, and how do we put the resources in place to be able to make that happen is another large group of work. And although some of the people might be the same of the two, I don't think, I think it would serve us well to, I think as you said, Greg, it's a chicken or egg. Let's try to move both forward concurrently and I think we're going to get where we want to get. Um, the one thing that I have found, um, is that the, the Freeport is collaborating with one another in a way that is marvelous. And I think if we have those two groups set up and moving forward, we have the right people on them, there is going to be collaboration between them because there's so much desire to get this done. Um, the, the group, of course, the five people who have been working on, um, the whole moving, uh, principal forward has been, you know, the town with Caroline, the council with Dan, me with FEDC. We have a representative from LL Bean. We have Tony Whitney and we have, um, Chip Gray. So those folks have been moving it forward. If we need to add more people onto that, um, and yes, I understand that you've already announced Brett Richardson is joining us in two weeks. Woo-hoo. Um, but, um, council, if, if you want to push that further, I'm fine with that. Um, I'm also fine with you calling forth a group to do the funding thinking because I think that's a huge nut for us to crack. And I'm not, I know not, I don't know much about it. Brett certainly does, but I think there's going to be a power of resources that need to be pulled together to make that happen. So I'm, I'm happy to staff this. I'm happy to drive it forward. I'm happy to bring the one, um, who is championing, bringing, um, the concepts of where we think we need to go to the council. I'm happy to drive the financing portion of it. Um, but I think we need the right people involved.
More wise words. Thank you, Mary. Um, and I, I agree. I think there's a prioritization chunk of work and a funding chunk of work that overlaps, but ultimately require different specialties. So Greg, I, I know I'm curious to have a conversation with you and happy to open that conversation up to anybody who's interested, including Mary, Ed or anyone else, um, to see what, what would that look like? What kinds of skills would we need in that group identifying likely people, bringing it back here to, to say, yeah, is this something that, that we want to endorse? Um, so yeah, I, I think we need to just start the conversation.
I should set your expectations around timing as well. I, on it, this is going to take some time.
Oh, yeah.
This, uh, this is months. It'll take months, um, probably into the summer before we could come back with, with something. So just to set expectations there. Thank you.
And I, I would agree with that as well. And talking with other folks who have implemented things like this, they absolutely say that the funding portion of it, and some of it is the sequencing of when the, um, when the funds are available. Um, but it takes time and I think as Greg said, it takes resources. You know, it takes people to get this done because some of it is pretty heavy lifting and very, very detailed lifting if you want to be competitive in the current market pace to get the funds.
And right off the bat, I know we will need a couple of town resources. So that's a conversation you could have now. It's like, who could, who and how much time could they spend helping us put this readiness team together? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I assume by now you don't mean tonight, but maybe this week. Yeah. Yeah, Darrell.
I, I guess I have a question and maybe the town manager here can answer this. Um, it is going to take months to get together, but we'll be through our budget process. So I'm hoping, uh, that if a, a request comes in, well, we have to bring an expert in that may cost some money. Uh, you know, would that be something that could be taken either out of reserves or, or do we have a, a place so we can act on that and not get caught up in, uh, let's say sometime before late fall where they need some substantial funding and we're not in the budget process? So that would be one question that, uh, I think probably the answer's yes, but I'll verify that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think we need to look at that. That, that, um, will not work with the operating budget timeline. Uh, you would have to do something after the operating budget has been passed, consider supplemental appropriation or something like that. So, um, if you're talking about after July 1, the council still has options available. Yes, absolutely. But, um, it wouldn't make it in unless it's, you know, in the next month and a half. It won't make it into the budget that's presented to you and it won't make it into the budget that you approve unless it's, you know, three months from now. So.
But there are options. That's, as I've told Ed, as I've talked with him over the past, a couple of times over the past week, I'm just trying to be realistic about what our dates are. We can't change them, but that's not meant to say it's never going to work if we're outside of those dates. We will have to do, take some additional steps though, if it's, if it is outside those dates.
Is there something that we can do in this next couple of months in the budget process to make sure we have kind of a pot to help do this? You know, and we're not talking about doing the whole project. We're talking about money to bring in a consultant, a thousand dollars here, maybe 2,000 there. It's not, because I don't, I don't know that, I mean, that, that's what I'm thinking. Or can you spend that money without having to come back to the council? Is there?
No, there's, there's not a pot there now, but yes, you, I mean, you, you can make it. Uh, you know, I can recommend it and you can make it. You're the ultimate authority as the council if you want it in there. So, um.
Part of what we've talked about is, um, in addition to all the workshop stuff I mentioned before, all the dates, there's another workshop on May 24th, which is after we've adopted the plan in theory. Um, and that is meant, that's exclusively with us and FEDC. Of course it's open to the public as well. Uh, but that's a good opportunity for us to say, look, now that we've seen the plan, got to kind of weigh in on priorities or, or pulling the groups together that we think might be needed. It, that's focused on implementation and saying, all right, how do we get this done? And the, the discussions that we've had, Peter and I and Mary and others, is at that meeting on the 24th, we may say, hey, look, we need another 10, 20 grand, whatever the right number. We need money in addition to the capital plan we're going to look at in a few minutes. Um, and my understanding is that we, we will have the opportunity to, to shift some things around and say, yeah, okay, let's grab from here or there, or just find some new pot of money or, or allocate some, some funding to say, yeah, we got to get this done. Here's some funding to do it or to jumpstart it anyway. Do you want to add to that, Greg?
I think it would be odd to say we need to find money knowing today you're going to get recommendations.
Yeah, agreed.
And you don't want to wait another year to act on those. Right? So, and you, we kind of have an inkling too, what those things are that are going to bubble to the top, right? We've heard them quite a few times. So it would make sense to me, you'd want to be thinking about setting aside money now, knowing that it's coming. That's just, just my thought.
I would, I would second what Greg said. Um, I think we would need to be in a situation where we didn't have the resources to look for those grants when we know, I think as Greg said, there's some of those priorities that I think we've already seen in design week. So I agree.
All right. So it sounds like we've got some direction going tonight. All right, cool. Ready to move on?
Okay.
Uh, Jessica Malloy is patiently waiting, uh, to present the five-year capital program that we will discuss at our public hearing at, uh, April 5th. Yeah.
Would it be, um, reasonable to ask if there'd be some summary of what consensus we've reached tonight so people will know, um, where we're, we're going, what, what this conversation added to the schedule that, um, was already on the table?
We can, I, I think part of the, the next steps is, are to have discussions to figure out what the next steps are. I don't mean to be facetious, but I don't know that we've resolved to do anything specific tonight other than to say, hey, we, we have direction, right? We, we've got to set up a readiness group. We've got to set up a, a prioritization committee.
We got to set up some kind of funding.
We want to see the draft and we want to have, you know, so there are a lot of things. I don't know that there's a, an item that gets checked off that we added to our list tonight.
Great things to add to the, the, the general list that we were already working with.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I'm asking for, so that we don't lose track of what this conversation.
Yep. Yep. So Christine, while we're doing, while we're on the topic, uh, can you add? I think we're up to number 15 on our list, um, to discuss readiness, assembling a readiness team and a prioritization team to act on future initiatives. We'll know what that means.
Can we put in something, search for money, for a pot of money that we can use?
I think that's the readiness team, right? That's what we're going to ask them to do is to say, hey, what, what, what grants are out there? What pots of money are out there?
Right, but I'm talking some money now so that when we're asking for experts or contractors to come and help us find those monies, you know, we have something we don't have to come back to us to, to reallocate.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping we'll do on the 24th, May 24th. Yeah, yeah. Darrell?
Uh, I'm wondering, knowing Mary and I'm probably sure she'd be prepared, would have a figure that she may bring forth at that meeting that could give us something tangible to look at that. That would be very helpful.
Good, good hint. Yep. Yeah. I, I think that's the expectation we're kind of setting for her and, and for Brett.
Are we off this, onto the next subject?
Yeah, I think we're ready. Yes. Thank you, Jessica. And after Jessica's piece, we've got a, an executive session, which I don't think should be too long.
You good?
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
All right.
Take it away.
So welcome to the beginning of the capital planning process for the, for the years 2023 to 2027 for the town of Freeport. Um, I always start these off with a brief definition of a capital item and a capital item is defined as an asset with a depreciable life of more than one year with items commonly being over $5,000 to $10,000 in value. Um, these are non-routine purchases and/or projects. Um, and ideally if they were to be accounted for in the general fund, they would really create unnecessary fluctuations within your budget and subsequently the mill rate. Whoops. So, um, as per course, the goals of the capital planning process are to maintain a stable tax rate, um, to ensure that equipment and projects are planned for in advance, as well as to reserve appropriate levels of funding for these projects, um, to avoid unnecessary, unnecessary, uh, borrowing and, and issuance of debt and to really try to be proactive in replacement of our assets rather than waiting and experiencing escalating maintenance costs and/or downtime. The 2023 plan in summary is coming in at $1,565,000. This is, uh, $57,000 less than fiscal year 2022. And in reality, this is, this decrease is due to staff kind of pushing- And in reality, this is, this decrease is due to staff kind of pushing projects out in order to allow for our reserves to kind of give them time to recover and build from the economic climate that we've been in. This is just a visual graphic of our 23 proposed capital plan. Again, the total proposal is $1,565,000. 52% of this proposed budget is for items relating to town roads and facilities as seen on these bottom two pie pieces. To take you through article by article briefly, this is the police department. They are requesting two new patrol SUV units and correlating equipment. So two units will come off the front line and move to the back line, and two back lines will be traded or sold. The total proposal is $100,000. And this year added, it is kind of coming out a little lighter than I thought it would. So I apologize, but this box that you have here is a historical look at the reserve balances for the police department over the last 10 years.
It's visible from back here.
Is it? Okay, good. So it's just, it's just a graphic representation to show you where, where our reserves have been and what we've had in them at June 30th each year. And then the last bullet point doesn't have a date, but it's the January reserve balance. Okay? The fire, sorry. The fire department has two requests this year. They are looking to do their SCBA bottle replacement, which is a replacement of 70 self-contained breathing apparatus units that are 15 years plus old. They also need to, or are requesting to replace the fill station for these SCBA units. The current unit is experiencing some ongoing repair issues. And we're currently having to rely on neighboring communities to get our bottles filled because of, between not being able to get the parts and what is wrong with it, it's creating a lot of downtime. And again, you can see the fluctuations in that reserve balance. The current reserve balance for the fire department is 452,623, or as of December 31st, it was.
A little indicator on that nosedive the account took in the past two years is a purchase of one piece of apparatus essentially.
Yeah, each of, each of the spikes that you see here is a purchase of a, of a vehicle, apparatus. So.
This is time to add.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and so the question I had, I go for fact, because I wrote the grants, we were able to replace all those through a federal grant. Now, I know the fire department doesn't have enough personnel to do that now, but maybe here is an example. Do we hire someone to write a grant? We're talking a pretty good amount of money, you know, to possibly come in and get some grants to do that. We have a federal program that those both would qualify, that we were successful 15 years ago. That the department doesn't have enough resources to do that. I'm not suggesting they do that. What I am suggesting is there a grant writer out there that we could say, hey, would you write a grant? I don't know.
Well, if we can take a look at the actual program, I'm not, I know nothing about the program, Darryl, but if you want to forward me some information, talk with me and Paul maybe.
I'll come in tomorrow and see you.
Yep. If you, or with Jessica, with the two of us, then we can look at it to see if it qualifies. As you know, there's, there's thresholds for all the, for all those grant programs. But if we're in it, we would be foolish not to explore it at least.
I, yeah. Well, you know, I, I just, I know the department doesn't have, I mean, it gets back to resources. It gets back to, which is the biggest discussion we've had, but.
We could, we can work with them. We can, if, if it makes sense financially, it makes sense financially to do it.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you. I'll stop by.
Yep.
So that currently their total proposal is $137,000. The rescue component of that department is looking to incorporate computer-aided dispatch units. These are units that display pertinent call information within the apparatus that they're in. It can contain information like the closest water source, whether there are special attention issues in the area that they need to be aware of, as well as a mapping function so that they can more react quicker and get to where they need to be faster because it'll tell them right where it is. This is a cloud-based unit software. And it will give us the ability to link with our neighboring communities, which will allow us to really assist with mutual aid calls. And this comes in at 19,000.
And that's going to do the rescues and the fire apparatus too?
That is my understanding.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. The Public Works Department is looking to replace truck six. This is a 2010 international dump truck. It's been starting to experience increasing repairs and downtime. And they are currently being proposed at 190,000. And I have a quick picture just to show you which unit we're talking about.
Actually, right behind you, if you want to pull those.
Yeah, it's going by the road right now.
Shaking the bench up here.
Right. Our solid waste recycling facility is looking to replace their skid steer. They would like to purchase a tractor versus a skid steer and, and purchase a tractor that has multiple attachments. So they'd be looking to add a sweeper, de-icing unit, snow blower and mower attachments. Having these attachments would give the ability for our existing staff to perform work that we're currently contracting out, like the mowing of the closed landfill and things of that nature. And this is coming in at a proposal of 70,000. Under comprehensive town improvements, the total proposal is $375,000 with the largest component being the road reconstruction and paving of Arnold Road. It's a half a mile long that we would be looking to rebuild. The next slide I have will show you some pictures of that. We also have an appropriation for the Concord Gully Brook watershed restoration that's been ongoing and can, will continue to go. This year, we're also looking to add funds for a road condition survey. This will be survey and data collected on our town roadways. And it will allow us to have qualitative and quantitative reports on our road conditions, allowing us to set paving schedules and get, you know, qualitative and quantitative data to, to back the condition of the roads and why they need to be done or can be deferred. The four, oh, sorry, go ahead.
This part of you can't answer, Jessica, but I would like to see us do an evaluation of our dirt roads. I wrote a study on dirt roads that are maintained annually. They contribute to runoff, which creates pollution. We have dust issues. One particular dirt road that I would like to have a history of our cost or everything is the Burnett Road. That particular road, I think, is a really high maintenance area that every year we spend a lot of money just so it's passable. So maybe that's something the Public Works Director could give because I think we need to start looking of where, you know, we're putting our resources and are we spending it wise? So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, common misconception that dirt roads are cheap. They're, they're cheap to, for capital costs, but they're much higher maintenance costs as you're pointing out. So. It's a balance. It, it, it evens out most of the time, if not costs more to run a dirt road. You're right. It can, and sometimes.
I think we need to look. Hope we can have these discussions.
Happy to do it. We've only got a few dirt roads that exist, so we can at least do a, you know, a summary for you.
Thank you. Good.
And the last item under comprehensive town improvements is an aid, is funding for ADA compliance work. This would be doing work at Hunter Road Field, Pounder Road Fields, Lower Main Street and Town Hall. So it'll be looking at all of those areas and seeing where we need to come into ADA compliance. So here is the pictures of the condition of Arnold Road, just to give you an idea of some of the rough spots there. The next article is municipal facilities. This is where a huge chunk of your funding goes. We'd be looking this year at a total proposal of 440,000. This includes server and firewall upgrades with our computers system. We would be looking for what is labeled as a red light upgrade. This is year one of a three-year project that we would be pursuing. And it's to basically help the, the red light situation along Route 1 corridor, updating the cabinets and sensors and stuff so that we don't have the issues that we've been having with the red lights. Public Works is also looking to replace their equipment lift. This, we're being told that this will be the last year that it will pass inspection in order to continue to be used. So it's, it's in need of being replaced. We are also looking to do some digitization of our files and maps. This is a multi-year appropriation that has occurred. And this is one more installment in that to help bring us up to the digital age with our files. This year, we're also looking to do some steel piling replacements down at the town wharf along with general town wharf repairs to the floats. We're looking to appropriate for town hall bathroom upgrades. And again, this is looking at some ADA compliance and inclusion issues so that we can get those up to speed. The appropriation that we have is more to begin a study to see what our opportunities are for those advancements. And we also need to update the library exterior doors. I don't know if you've been up there recently, but they kind of slam when they close and the wall shakes a little bit because the framing is rotting and so this is all in your narrative. But yeah, so we'd be looking to replace those and get those more secure, as well as the annual revaluation reserve, which we do every year to help contribute and keep up with the, our revaluation levels of the town.
I just want to point out, I'd gladly say, trade a little bit of digitization of maps and even the bathroom upgrades for to make sure that we are getting the absolute best in possible server firewall upgrades. We had an experience in the past year, last year, being hacked by nefarious technicians, let's say. I want to attribute to where they came from.
We're Eastern European. Let's be very straightforward about that.
And we were very close to having a data breach where we would have been in a position to have to consider paying a ransom to get our data secured and to keep public information secured. So, and largely because you and the manager had a conversation about upgrades, Jessica, and you suggested one, and that particular upgrade was instrumental in, in allowing us to maintain this integrity that we did maintain. So I would, I would heartily endorse whatever we need there to make sure that that never happens again or as much as we can.
A big chunk of that money is exactly for that purpose, Mr. Vice Chair. So firewalls and gates and things like that.
I mean, that's something we take for granted, that it just goes by and 100,000 emails go across our server every week. And we don't think anything of it until all of a sudden the malware is released and we have nothing.
Yeah.
And the town was paralyzed for 72 hours, not being able to communicate at all. So it's not a, it's not an, it's not a frivolous investment by any means at all. And I think we should be focusing on that.
Sure. I look forward to the discussion. This is actually, what we've proposed is a two-year rollout because I, with the quote we were given from our IT provider, I wasn't comfortable bringing forth the full amount. So what I have before you is really a two-year rollout, though I'm not sure it's their recommendation. So yeah, that would be a welcome discussion to see where the priority should be.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So do we, do we purchase all of our equipment or do we, have we looked at leasing? Because I noticed in the narrative, it said, you know, we try to upgrade everything four to five years. I mean, is there value in doing like a three-year lease?
That can certainly be pursued. We have typically purchased in the past. There are options to lease and be with, like with our software company, we can, we could become hosted by them versus self-hosting, which would eliminate one of the server needs. So there, there are room, there is room for discussion of where that would be. I mean, the good thing is, is like with this attack that we had, we kind of owned it and were able to react a little quicker with being it. And that wouldn't change from a internal lease perspective. But if we were to outsource with our vendor and have them host us, that, you know, there could be, there's pros and cons to them both. So certainly not opposed. It can certainly be discussed.
My, my question, and I know how we go and we, and we look at the budget line, but if we cut back on those funds and it, and it's not the best protection we have for our system, is it wise? I, I personally would say if it's going to cost $400,000, it costs $400,000. We protect that system. We don't have the issues we had. So I guess I would encourage, and I appreciate you trying to hold that line, but sometimes, you know, we, we hold back and we, we make some decisions that may cost us a lot more money down the road if we're not prepared. So I would encourage you to say, is it the best? And I appreciate you trying to hold the line, but boy, I think we're going to see more encursions. And unfortunately, I think these type of things are going to be more critical to protect in the future.
So I'm going to just have two responses. One, I'm just going to jump back to you really quick. The, the four and five-year indication is more for our personal laptops and computer, desktop PCs because the lifespan of those units are really only four or five years. So that, that lifecycle is more just on the desktop units so that they don't become stale. Like we just went, a couple of years ago, I had to start with another major appropriation for computers because we were all on Windows 7. I had to get us all the Windows 10 because it was no longer being serviced. So, you know, that's why we try to do a four or five-year cycle on all of those. Servers are a little bit longer. I think they're usually eight to 10. So just to clarify that. As far as the comfort level that I have with what was proposed, certainly have looked at that. I mean, ideally, I'd love to have it covered year one. However, the reality of our rollout process and the fact that, you know, these funds become available July 1st and the ability of when our contracts are up, like our firewall renewals, you know, we have to wait for that contract to be up in order to set the next one. Right? So looking at the timing, I don't know that it can feasibly all get done in FY '23. Versus, and when I say that, I mean, like, let's say, when you're talking between June of '23 versus July or August of '24, you know, a month is not like a deal breaker for me as long as I know the plan is to be appropriated over, you know, and I can't hold you to multi-year appropriations, but that's kind of the intent, right? Of just, we have these on an annual basis. And just like I said, the ability of the timing of these things ending and being able to get them done. It might be able to be done. I know that our IT provider is suggesting it all get done in FY '23. For me, from an appropriation standpoint, if it's June of FY '23 or July of FY '24, I'm not sure that that's a huge difference, but.
I think, I think to point to, the easiest way to summarize what you're saying, you're comfortable, and I'm comfortable with $125,000 in this fiscal year only to the extent that there's agreement that the 100,000 or more in the following FY '24, the next line down, is on the table and won't be, you know, won't be nickel and dimed on that, on that little amount there that, that we are expecting to have to pay a significant chunk in the following fiscal year as well if we do it and split it into two. So.
Yeah, I would agree.
If not, we should do it all in one year.
Right, exactly. And if council's comfort level is more to appropriate all in one year, the same on the inverse can be said, right? Like you can appropriate the full 200,000 in year, in this year, right? It doesn't mean that it's necessarily all going to get spent in FY '23. So if you're more comfortable making sure that it's appropriated and there and ready, that can be done and we'll spend it as it comes due and rolls out. So that, you know, it's also in the inverse.
And we'll take it out of the plan for two years from now, next year.
Right. And if it doesn't get spent, then it goes back to reserves within, you know, three years. So. Just a quick picture to show you the lift. I hadn't seen it, so I asked her all to send me a picture. So I thought it'd be kind of neat to put in there. Looking at the community cable television reserve, we were looking to fund 24,000 for equipment relating to Channel 3 and Channel 14. This is a pretty standard appropriation that we request based on upgrading of the, all the HD equipment that we bought a few years back and just kind of maintaining that equipment for our cable users. equipment for our cable users. Next slide is boards and committees. The only thing on this article for this year is the comprehensive plan update. It's year three of the three-year appropriation. Last year, we reduced the appropriation a little bit and put it out to this year, knowing that we had the visioning plan and there were a lot of other things going on. So the total proposal is $50,000 from this reserve. Now we're on to Destination Freeport Tiff, where we are looking at $160,000. This encompasses our standard sidewalk improvements for downtown, as well as our FEDC contribution for economic development. This proposal will be probably changing by $20,000. Heard from Mary today at FEDC that she's actually looking for $135,000 versus what you have in the plan before you, which is $115,000.
Yep.
But my understanding is that because of Keith's departure, there's a, a reserve that's been accumulated that can go at least for some portion of that additional $20,000 increase?
That's for the rest of this year.
That's for the, this current fiscal year versus next?
It will be all absorbed in the rest of, that, the increase in salary will be all, that will, excuse me. The amount that was saved by Keith's departure will all be consumed by the increased salary in this year.
In theory, that, that statement is correct. I have not seen any figures and am not part of the FEDC process to know that that's actual fact, but in theory, your, your statement is correct.
That's what we're expecting.
It might turn out to be that way.
Yeah.
Question for Mary.
I mean, Will, can Jessica and I can sit down and go through her books and numbers with her, which she's got available. She's doing a pretty good job of staying up to speed on them, and since they've, they've been without an executive director. We'll make sure that the $20,000 is actually needed next year, but I'm assuming that their request is probably valid. If, if that's what they want to, if that's what the, the will of the council and the will of the FEDC board is, it's accurate.
Right, I mean, there's always a balance of what they should come up with, you know, through their means versus, you know, town funding. So, so just to give you an awareness that that, that number will be changing as we move through discussions, or being requested to change.
One more question, one more question?
Oh, sorry.
So the downtown Destination Tiff is dealt with, all, all requests are dealt within the capital budget, whether or not the ultimate expenditure is for capital items?
Yeah, so the funding mechanism of, of, and that was going to be one of my parting comments, based on some of the discussion that's happened tonight, is that what's before you is the capital plan. It doesn't necessarily indicate at this point that that's 100% out of reserves. So if you look, I think it's page one of your capital plan that has the summary, there's, there's the FY '22 appropriation, so that you see that, the FY '23 of what's being proposed, but then there's a whole section, right, to the right of that that indicates funding source. And you'll notice that that's not populated yet, because that won't get populated until we go through council discussion and, and appropriation to determine what funding is available for different components, whether it's just from reserves, whether it's bonding, whether it's grants, so.
My question was a little more
Sorry.
narrow. In the, in the Tiff budget, all, all Tiff expenditures are considered in, in the capital process? That's a question?
Yes.
No matter what the ultimate use of, okay.
Yes, sorry, sorry.
Yep.
My bad.
I know that I should know what you told me. I have no idea.
All right, so my last couple of slides relate to our reserve balances, because I know this has been a, an item of discussion and concern for councils, so I just wanted to be able to give you a brief summary and overview of our reserves. So what you have here are our unaudited 123121 reserve balances for each of the major articles. And the benchmarks, the low benchmark is 20% of our 20-year plan, and the high benchmark is typically the five-year plan. Sometimes those flop depending on what we have projected out, so, but most of them, the low benchmark is 20% of the 20-year plan, high benchmark is the five-year plan. And then I take it a step further and I say, what is the average of that, just to kind of see if we're within that ballpark? And so four of our eight reserves, we currently are what I'll label as underfunded. You know, it's, it's subjective because I'll be coming before you to, you know, move money from our fund balance if we're over, you know, fund balance policy levels and whatnot. So it's, it's a loose terminology, but I think for simplicity purposes, it's the phrase I'm going to use. So, and I just also want to point out with this, that rescue, the rescue line at $207,000 over the average mark, so our reserve balance is $207,000 more than our average benchmark, that actually has a designated funding source. That, that funding comes from our emergency rescue charges, so calls that we do that we were talking about earlier. Let's see.
Jessica, do you recall off the top of your head what we contributed to the overall reserves from the fund balance at the, at the end of last fiscal year?
Last year.
To come forward into this year?
Roughly, I think it was like 1.2.
Yeah, I was going to say, it was just over a million as well.
Yeah, I think it was like 1.2 million that we put into reserves.
Right. So just for, for folks to remember that these don't just appear out of nowhere, we're funding these with, with budgeting through our operating as well as savings throughout the year. And then a couple of these things, as Jessica just mentioned, have their own revenue streams. So, so the, the reserve balances, I was, this is enlightening for me, which is why I'm sharing it, but the reserve balances that we have to make all of these purchases, 1.5 million this year, 1.6 something last year, are because we've had this fiscal discipline, there's not a better phrase to use, about how we plan for these large capital items. The last thing we want to have happen is needing an $800,000 fire truck, and we have $52,000 to pay for it, so.
Yeah.
And the, the fact that we haven't had to bond for any of these capital pieces of equipment or capital investments in well over a decade?
Yeah.
Well over a decade, indicates that the fiscal discipline that Jessica is outlining and following pays off.
Yeah.
So I just want to put that out there before we have discussion about where we are on it, that it's working really well.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. And, and to kind of segue, segue in, I'm, I'm just going to follow up what you were saying, you know, some of these do have designated funding sources. We have a traffic and, traffic and parking improvements that get funded by parking lease revenues, but as you know, parking lease revenues have plummeted. So that's a, that's a revenue source that used to fund reserves that's drying up or dried up. We also have other, do you, hold on one second.
Perhaps soon to be replaced with taxpaying buildings that are being going to constructed on those parking spaces.
Yeah. Yeah. And so the, the rest of the items on this list, those are all, I just wanted to kind of segue further with what John was saying, that they're funded from these following sources that I'm going to give you, and, and the primary one at this point is fund balance that's in excess of our policy, which is currently at one and a half months of budget, okay, of total budget. So that's, that right now is your primary funding source. Five years ago, that was not your primary funding source. That was a pleasant surprise into your reserves, or reduction in tax. There was more flexibility in what to do with that excess fund balance, okay?
Some of that, it was raised as a question, which was ambulance revenue that used to go into
Yes.
transport fees, non-emergency transport revenue, which was a substantial
Right, it's why the rescue reserve is so well-funded, because we're still riding that high with, but our fleet has been reduced, so we haven't had to replace as many units because we don't need as many units because we're not doing as many net runs because we lost the par view contract, or, we didn't lose it, but they, they closed. So, go ahead.
Have we looked to bring it back?
I haven't, above my pay grade. The, so our primary funding source is that fund balance, but some other items, just so that you're aware, are any sale of equipment and property, both real and personal property are considered for funding your reserves. Lease proceeds, there's BARTL lease, that used to be probably your primary funding source. It is no longer. It's barely throwing pennies in at this point, as well as cell tower leases. The, you know, those, those two alone used to put almost $500,000 annually into your reserves, that we're lucky if we're getting 75 to 100,000 now. And then it, another funding source is when there are balances left in these capital accounts. So where we're budgeting $250,000 for Arnold Road, if we're able to get a great, you know, paving contract because, you know, paving prices drop dramatically, right?
Dirt roads.
Right? But yeah, or you decide to, you know, make it a dirt road instead, that money, once we know the project is done, reverts back into the reserves, so. The, another funding source is any unanticipated revenues. Those are not, typically not significant in nature, but they help and they assist.
Can I ask you one more question?
Of course.
Your last points. How are you doing the estimates this year, knowing that the price of goods, the price of labor is going to be really challenging? I mean, are you taking, are you going out and grabbing a, a rough quote and then adding 15% or what's your approach?
Yeah, so we typically go out for quotes on the, on the larger ticket items, just to have an idea, and there usually is some sort of inflation clause, clause in there to, to make sure that we're covered. Each department head kind of grabs those quotes and, and brings them forth, but that's typically the process that's done.
We usually get not binding quotes necessarily, but we'll usually get like, hey, this is good until fall.
Right, or like
We can guarantee this price for three or four months, so we know we've at least got a pretty good idea of something. A lot of, not a lot of people selling to municipalities won't at least give us a, a target date that they'll honor the price until, most of the companies will. Doesn't mean we have the ability cash flow-wise to buy it in, you know, October, we might have to wait and we may be faced with what you're saying. So in those cases, we'll work with the department heads to say, hey, we're not going to be able to buy it in three months, you know, it is going to need another 20%, or maybe you should put double what the cost might be because, you know, it's oil-based or something like that.
And then just really quick, the last two are amounts that are established for the reserves within our annual operating budget. So within the operating budget, you can choose to also fund a component of your reserves. So that, say a $500,000 appropriation annually allows for a more stable tax rate and allows you to continue to fund your reserves. And then the third one is interest that gets earned on the investment portfolio, which we know in this current rate environment is certainly not helping us, but hopefully we're on the horizon of making those changes.
The ARPA funds that were unanticipated, where, how did they get accounted for in this process?
So the, the ARPA funds are not really deemed or considered unanticipated in that regard, because there are very strict treasury guidance on what they can be used for and, and how they can be used. They can certainly be used for roadwork, so like Arnold Road could be done with ARPA funds if you chose. And there's, there's a whole series of categories that can be explored for ARPA funding, for sure, but.
How does that work its way through the budget?
The ARPA funding?
Say we decide, we're going to have a meeting, we're going to decide how to spend it, and then you then figure out what our priorities are and then place those priorities in expenditure categories inside the budget?
Technically, it should probably show, we haven't got there yet in our consideration, so don't, don't kill me. Think it over, think it over and kill me tomorrow, don't kill me right now. It should probably show as a wash in the budget with the amount we expect to spend, you know, a $500,000 expenditure and a $500,000 revenue, but it's not going to be in year one, which is the problem, that I'm having trouble wrapping my hands around.
So the ARPA funding currently is set up in my books in mind as special revenue, where it's, it's designated funds for whatever projects you deem, so that I can track it separate than the general fund. So you're not going to see from what, and again, he can kill me tomorrow after we have the discussion, because it's kind of the opposite of what Peter was just indicating. But as it stands right now, I have those funds separated because there is very specific reporting requirements that are needed, and for accounting purposes, it will be much easier if those funds are segregated. I have a different bank account set up for them, like I have everything separate. So once it's deemed what those funds are going to be used for, then I'll pull them out of that special revenue account versus your general fund and doing journal entries and moving stuff.
I agree with everything you said, I wasn't even talking about that, I was just thinking about the, the appropriation.
Oh, oh, yeah.
We'll discuss in further detail tomorrow.
Sure.
It's a good question, though.
Just one final question for revenue coming in for the capital budget. It used to be if a department had leftover in their operating budget for the fiscal year, that money would go to that, does that still happen?
Yes, it does, and that's part of the annual request that I bring forth to you of the savings from the operating budget. Yep, the, yes, absolutely. And this is just a visual graphic of everything you saw on all the preceding slides for the historical reserve balance. I just, you know, I'm an accounting person, so graphs are fine, so I just thought I'd throw it up there. Right, so yeah, just a visual representation of the, where the reserves have been and where we are now and.
I would have appreciated it in stacked bar format, but we can talk about, we can talk about that tomorrow too, so.
Right.
It's great work, thank you, Jessica.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We'll have an opportunity to dig in on April 5th, you're back?
Yeah, I believe the
Workshop, right?
The next meeting is the workshop, so the 15th is the workshop, and then the 5th is the public hearing and workshop. So yeah, we'll have four, four meetings to dive right into anything you want to see on capital.
Putting meeting with department heads on specific requests when you guys want more details on why something's failing and what we should do about it, so.
And are you both okay if individual counselors want to ask questions about individual items, just to you outside of workshops and meetings?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and you know, if there's stuff you want to have prepared for the meeting to bring forth, definitely feel free to reach out, and we do our best to get everything to you guys to, so that when you're at the bar, you're able to have a hearty discussion versus waiting for information. So absolutely, feel free to reach out.
Can I, can I make a request of Peter, that the Public Works Director on the discussion of their roads particularly, I'm very interested in that, because I think it's going to find, we may have a saving opportunity that we can do down the road. So if he could look at that, I think that would be very helpful for the council. What do we meet with him, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome.
This is pretty clear, and it's also, in my council experience, pretty simple. So I wonder if there's a way that we can reduce the burden on department heads and on us by just collapsing the amount of time and number of times that we address this same proposal. And one way I, I thought was if, you know, if nobody has a question for Public Works, no counselor says, I want the Public Works guy here, he just doesn't come. You know, we say we, we like to, I mean, maybe that's not going to happen, but can we, is there anything like that that's worth considering, or is that just too much work?
Well, I think one suggestion I might have is if we have one workshop and we get through everything that you've, that you've got concerns about, say it then, if nobody's got any further comments, let's strike the workshop from the next meeting and just do the, you know, adoption at the end.
Fair enough.
We've got workshop, public hearing.
Workshop, public hearing, workshop, then a final adoption, right, at the end of April?
I don't think there's a third workshop, I think it goes right to adoption. Or maybe there's a workshop just before the adoption.
After the public hearing at the same meeting, yes. So there's three meetings following this meeting, you're going to have a workshop, you're going to have a public hearing with an additional workshop, and then there's the adoption meeting. So if
So the second workshop could be canned if we don't
Could be condensed, for sure. Or maybe just we could answer questions raised at the public hearing at that workshop, if there are some.
Right, so let's see how far we get with the next workshop.
You got it.
Yeah, I'm all for that, I'm all for less meeting.
And keep in mind that
Shorter meetings.
That this, that this, this four-meeting That this, this four-meeting, or the adoption of the capital plan is just that. It's just the adoption of this five-year plan, it's not the appropriation of the funds. That comes with the operating budget later on, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Just so we didn't get too excited about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thanks, Jessica.
So, I think that concludes our...
One, one quick item, we had a quick discussion earlier about possibly starting meetings at 5:30, and we, I, I had a, talked to a bunch of counselors, and, you know, we all agreed that later it gets tougher, some of the decisions, so if that, if we agree to that, is that something we can do?
I think so, I had a couple of individual conversations that I... There was a 5:30 number, a 6 o'clock number thrown around, does anybody have any issues with doing either of those times, if we did move it up, which I'm in favor of? 5:30. Matt?
I'm fine either way, I, I think it would be great to move it up. Do we have any concern about the public participation? I mean...
There's always going to be times that work better and worse for specific groups, so you'll pick up some people, sorry, I'm standing up, because I was just going to go get the phone for the next thing, but I'll, I'll continue stand over here, because...
Talking to your microphone.
Yeah. I think if you're, if you're earlier, you're going to appeal to people who don't like, you know, late nights, or who can't stay up till 11 o'clock at night to come to your meetings, and, you know, you might get out at 10, you might get out at 9:30 instead, but you're going to lose people who commute during that time period, or have kid transfer, you know, getting kids dinner, that kind of stuff, so that, it's a trade-off. There's never going to be a time that works, I could say middle of the day works poorly for a lot of people, but when it comes to evening, anytime from 4 to 12, depending if you shift earlier, you're going to tick off some people that can't get here in time from work. If you shift later, you're going to lose people who can't stay awake and don't want to stay awake, or, you know, go to bed at 9 o'clock and you're having a meeting at 12, so there is not a good, there's not a good answer, right?
All the time.
A change, people are used to the way it is now, you're not taking anybody off by having meetings where they are now. You will if you change it, but you'll make some people happier too, so...
How long has it been like this?
Since as far as anyone can remember, we just talked about that before the meeting.
It's been, I worked for the town, I've been working government for this town, I think it was 28 years, and always been that way, so I think we must have done it back before Hector was a pop, and, you know, we never changed it, so I, I, I think we, we have got a lot on our plates, we have a lot of work going on, I think it'd make it more efficient, I think it'd be a good flow, and then if we find that it's not worked for the public, we can fix it.
Yep.
What do you, what do you think of 5:30 or 6:00, raise your hands, 5:30?
I'm okay with both, but I do work in Portland and I get out between 4:30 and 5:00, so...
Yeah, that's sort of, I'm wondering.
Maybe initial change of 6:00 and then we'll see how it goes and try again.
Yeah, yeah, all right, yeah, 6 o'clock? We'll aim for 6:00, and you can tell us if we need to change any rules, or, I assume we could do that, I actually don't want to do it too soon, but...
I don't think rules, but I think schedule, you might want to, Chris and I will look at, to see where it's specified, but we didn't find anything that specified the time, just the days, right, because it was specified Tuesdays in a lot of our documents, so...
You can change the day?
No, the day will need a little bit more effort, I think that might, that's either in the charter or in the admin code, but, but the time is not specified as 6:30 legally.
All right, so we'll aim to put something on the agenda to change what we need to change.
Maybe change the schedule for the, at least the remainder of the year, something like that.
Okay, we'll deal with it at the next item, next agenda.
Yeah, I'd put that, yeah, we'll put that as an agenda item at the next meeting to...
Well, yeah, if we need, yeah.
To change, I think we should change.
It might be an announcement, if it's not a rule we need to change, but we can discuss it.
Yeah, I think it's scheduled, but we'll, yeah, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
My question is, you know, we've got this list of sort of ongoing projects, how do we manage that?
It's a good question, I was looking at it to say, are there things we can propose crossing off that list? And I kind of do that each meeting, haven't yet found any that are what I would consider to be done, but it's certainly up for, you know, discussion about, is that something you guys want to go through every meeting? I don't think that's the right thing to do.
Want to leave it up to each counselor who, who's wondering why something hasn't been done, to ask the question at the meeting?
Sure, there are names on the list for a reason, so I...
Or, or maybe another one that they're interested in that isn't being, okay.
I think a lot of it, most of it, most of them are moving, I agree with you that there's not anything crossed off yet, but the next couple of meetings...
I think you could, you could cross off the one about testing.
Yep.
As far as I'm, yeah.
All right. All right, if we're all done with regular business, it's time to move into executive session. So, before we do that, hang on, hang on, we're considering action relative to an executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 405-6C pertaining to a real estate matter, and one MRSA Section 405-6E pertaining to a legal matter. Do I have a motion to move into executive?
So moved.
Thank you, Council Lawrence. Thank you, Council Bradley. All in favor? Roll call, Council Phil's meeting?
Aye.
Council Porehair?
Aye.
Council Lawrence?
Aye.
Council Danielle? Council Bradley?
Yes.
Council Chee, Egan?
Yes.
Chair, what's yes as well, unanimous. So we're now in executive session.
Everyone stand up.